President of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome you to the November 10th, 2021 Board Meeting. To comply with the recent state mandate, mask mandate, we ask everyone to please wear a mask. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 6:30 p.m. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the Board. I would remind us all to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So move.
By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions, corrections? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need an approval of the minutes for the unapproved Board meeting, minutes for October 13th, 2021. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny. Comments, questions?
Sorry, I was just looking through. So we had received some minor edits.
Yes, we did, already.
I'm just making sure I understand what those were.
Ms. Lucido, that completed those. Okay. All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need to read a statement about the announcement and summary of Open Meetings Compliance Board opinion. The Open Meetings Compliance Board has issued a decision regarding the special meeting on August 26, 2021, and has found the following violations. There was inadequate notice provided in terms of (a) the content of the notice, (b) an indication of the location for the meeting, and (c) by not using all methods at the Board disposal to give adequate notice to the public of the meeting, and engaging in discussion about how to communicate the Board's position on masks after the provision of legal advice was sought and obtained. The Board has reviewed decision and will be making the following adjustments to our procedures. All meeting notices will be updated to include the specific location for the meeting beyond just the letterhead address. Meeting notices for meetings scheduled for topics that may require closed session discussion will clarify that the decision is convened. Closed session is a public meeting at which the public may be present. Meeting notices for meetings that are urgent or emergency meetings will be announced through the normal methods of press release and the CCPS website, but will also include announcements via social media platform and emails to all parents and employees. Thank you. And at this time, we will go on to the Carroll County Student Government Report. Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Thank you. Good.
Good evening, Board members. CCSG held a staff meeting on October 19th where we reviewed the feedback from our Fall Summit and the respective action plans of the individual school SGAs. We're very hopeful that our schools can slowly start to rebuild their student leader numbers and be ready to attend the December General Assembly. We have tentatively planned the December General Assembly for December 15th, and we are in the midst of adjusting our plans for a possible virtual setting. MASCE, the Maryland Association of Student Councils, is hosting a Fall Leadership Conference on November 20th, so we're hoping that we can have some of our delegates attend and bring back some leadership advice that they can share with the rest of the group. My Vice President Nikki Zhang and I are still working on the presentation about CCSG for the middle schools, and hopefully we can reach out to all of them by the end of the month. Overall, this past month has been focused on having various plans for our December General Assembly, and we are hoping to host a countywide fundraiser for CCSG very soon. CCSG has another staff meeting planned for November 16th in order to figure out a COVID-friendly General Assembly that will still engage students, and that is all. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Well, thank you so much. At this time, we will have public comments, and Mr. Kyler, you are on.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be questioned in answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The Superintendent Board reserved the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 and 6:30 p.m. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. I think we have 14 speakers. We'll do all 14 regardless of the 30 minutes, and if somebody comes between now and 6:30, they still have the right to speak then. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, a speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you're unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Our first speaker is Kaitlin Edmondson.
My name is Kaitlin Edmondson. Thank you, Board members, and thank you, concerned parents of Carroll County. I won't take up much time tonight because I have my children with me, but this week, my five-year-old daughter, who's in kindergarten, told me that she takes bathroom breaks at school, not because she has to use the bathroom, but so she can breathe without her mask on for a minute. Please let that sink in. A five-year-old asks to use the bathroom, flushes the toilet, pretends to go to the bathroom, just so she can take her mask off for a minute or two. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Belinda Lawson.
If Black kids and minorities know they can be successful, they can't be controlled and used. CRT teaches children all the way, all the bad history we've experienced, and never focuses on the good things, and how we can be and are successful. This is CRT, DEI, SEL, and ETM. These need to be out of the school system. When teachers teach through the lens of CRT-based learning, it psychologically convinces kids to be victims and to treat people based on their assigned group, often using race. Tell students in these groups they can't do anything simply because they are born a different color. It stereotypes all Black people and minorities to be disadvantaged or marginalized. It labels us and puts us in this category of nothing. It then targets white people and blames everything on white people to create division, using our troubled history as a reason to discriminate against people that had nothing to do with the things that happened back then. This will be the reason why we start to have issues, is because you're allowing some teachers to insert personal feelings and teach these children to hate others, not because the system is racist, but because there are those that have failed to properly educate themselves on fact and rely heavily on media and current false rhetoric. This will create a culture of people who fail over and over and over again, and create mass division. It puts us against each other. CRT is a college course centered around law. This was never supposed to be for K through 12. If they cared about history, they would recognize it when it happens. Instead, Black people like myself witness biased media networks demonize Black minorities making great accomplishments by calling a successful female Black veteran that believes in parents' rights to be involved in their child's education a white supremacist, simply because she is a proud American and she knows how amazing her country is. Winsome Sears legally immigrated to the United States from Kingston, Jamaica, when she was six years old. She is the first Black woman elected to a statewide office in Virginia. Before being elected Virginia's Lieutenant Governor, she served in the U.S. Marine Corps, has a master's degree, ran a women's homeless shelter, and raised three kids, and now has made history. This is a prime example of why this movement needs to be stopped, so these teachers can be allowed to teach factual history and not handpicked race-baiting events to trigger emotional responses and ruin these young minds. I encourage everyone to go to CCPS website, skim through the information so you can understand what the goals of CCPS are. I encourage you to communicate with your students, teachers, and not be afraid to ask questions about what is in their child's classwork. Teachers should have no problem being transparent with their students' parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, is it Martin? Did I say it right?
You did.
Kate Martin. You wrote neatly. I just can't read.
I tried. I really need forty today. Good morning, Board. Thank you again for allowing the public to speak. My name is Kate Martin, and my plan is to continue to come out here and show you guys support on behalf of our community. I'm part of the Concerned Parents of Carroll County. We're asking that you counter the ridiculous mask mandate and fight against the vaccine mandate that we feel is coming down the pike. Surrounding counties have started to mandate their student athletes be vaccinated for winter and spring sports at this time, and what we don't want to see happen is the State Board override the decision that you guys have made. I'd like you to consider being proactive in terms of having a legal counsel, one that does not have a conflict of interest with the State Board, and be ready to stand up when and if they make the ruling to mandate the vaccine in our county. The future of Carroll County Public Schools is going to depend on how this potential mandate plays out. Not only has Carroll County seen a decline in enrollment over the last several years, but there was multiple families that pulled their children out of the school system when the mask mandate was forced on us by the State Board. I can assure you that if the vaccine mandate rolls out in Carroll County, you're going to see a major decline of parents pulling their children out immediately. We need you, Board. We need you to fight for us. We depend on you, and we appreciate you. You're the face of this community, and we need you, and you have our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Novak.
Something I'm hearing from all teachers is how tired they are. At the last BOE meeting, Ms. McCullough stated the teachers are already in May-tired mode. I can't help but wonder how much of this is due to the attacks on the teachers from parents that are not qualified to evaluate them. There are some things I can teach my children, crafts, certain school subjects, our family values. There are many things I cannot teach my child because I don't have the education that Dr. Dorsey and Ms. Herbert went through to understand how to teach, how to engage the students, what curriculum is needed for the student's next step. I'm concerned about the possibility of changes to politically neutrality policy that will cause more harm and be a way to appease the anti-diversity, equity, and inclusion groups. I agree the classrooms should be politically neutral. I just have concerns about the definition of politically neutral and the possibility of the retaliatory effect on teachers and students if they show support to underrepresented groups such as people of color and the LGBTQ community. There are parents that complain that their religion condones homosexuality as a justification to not be inclusive to the LGBTQ community. I've seen justifications, for instance, of hate in our schools and in our community based on inclusion policies. Teaching is stressful enough. Let's not add to it by allowing parents' personal beliefs get in the way of education of facts. I'm not asking that teachers not be held accountable, simply that it should come from people qualified to evaluate. Here are some things that are not political, but some argue is. Human rights are not political. Inclusion of the LGBTQ community is not political. Recognition that racist things happened in the past and continue to happen today is not political. I believe in every BOE meeting since last May, there have been speakers about the problems with hate in this county. I've seen and heard many hateful comments, both in person and on social media, from parents. Some of it is overt, such as telling a student to die, or the use of racial slurs. Some of it is more subtle, such as derogatory remarks about names. Mr. Kyler's response at the last meeting was to tell the students that they should go to a counselor or an administrator. You don't think they haven't tried that already? Some of the students even stated that they did. It would be helpful to remind everyone of the bullying, harassment, or intimidation reporting website. Last meeting was the perfect time for that. It would be meaningful for the BOE to make a statement to condemn hate incidents. It would be meaningful if all the BOE members attended events regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, not just Dr. Dorsey. Please correct me if I'm wrong in that. I hope I am. Some of the children that are committing hate incidents are learning it at home. Their role models are using the same language and doing the same hateful things. I've seen it. Our BOE needs to make a statement against hate for the students, staff, and parents. Everyone needs to know it is not acceptable, and there will be consequences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Novak, I would like to correct you on something. Mrs. Herbert and myself did go to the Equity and Inclusion Day that was at Winters Mill.
Thank you so much.
Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Tom Scanlon.
Hi. My name is Tom Scanlon, and I am a candidate for the Board of Education. I attended the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting on October 27th and was happy to hear the presentation on world languages given by Amy Pritchett. I know Donna and Tyra were there, and I hope you are as excited about it as I was. For those of you who weren't there, I want to highlight one proposal. Carroll County offers courses in five world languages: Spanish, French, German, Latin, and American Sign Language. Unfortunately, there's a wide disparity between the high schools as to which languages are offered where. For example, students at Westminster High School have the most options with four of the five languages being offered, but not French. At the other end of the spectrum, Francis Scott Key only offers Spanish, one language. So if a student there wants to take German, for example, they are out of luck. The proposal from the World Languages team is to offer a virtual class during the school day for each of the languages except ASL. Under this plan, students at FSK could sign up for Latin or French. Students at Manvau could sign up for German, even though it's not offered on that campus. This proposal would not cost the school system much, but it would expand the opportunities across the county for lots of students. So I hope you give this your full consideration. Now to shift gears. At the last Board meeting, we heard several speakers talk about bullying in some of our schools. We would all like to think that these are just a few isolated incidents, that this is not a prevalent problem across the county. Since then, I have heard from several parents from several schools, and I am concerned. Those of us who have worked in schools know that bullying does happen, and we also know that kids are really good at hiding it. But it's our job to make sure it doesn't happen. I have heard from too many parents, especially from the parents of LGBTQ students, about administrators who minimize or even ignore the harassment of their children. And it also appears to be very school-specific. Some administrators take action and handle situations well, and others don't. And that is concern. So the leadership against bullying, the leadership of promoting acceptance, must come from the top. The expectation of an inclusive school culture must come from the Board. It must come from the Superintendent on down. Administrators need to be trained, especially when dealing with the harassment of LGBTQ students. Administrators need a deeper understanding of these issues, and they need the tools to handle problems when they arise. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Lindsey Fabiano.
Hi. My name is Lindsey Fabiano, and I'm the proud mother of a fifth-grade student in the CCPS school system. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard by this panel and share this experience and practice of freedom with my son, who's here with me today. I'm not in favor of vaccinating my child, not because I'm generally anti-vax, but because of reasoned, measured analysis as relates to COVID-19 vaccine. Where's the research integrity in this current rush to vaccinate our children? Bob Kaplan, professor and emeritus of Public Health at Stanford and UCLA, questioned Pfizer and other vaccine manufacturers during a recent panel for the vaccine injured. They are refusing to publish the raw data that we would need to make an informed personal choice any earlier than 2025, and not one representative accepted the invite to address the panel. How can this lack of information and data possibly justify a vaccine mandate? The manufacturers do not know the long-term prognosis of vaccine-induced myocarditis, or whether heart damage is permanent, because there's not been enough time to determine the full impact of these long-term effects. We haven't studied the problem for long enough to make those kinds of determinations. This is just one major issue we have encountered in this learning process, but there are countless others. Mandating any major health treatment, even if it may be a risk for only some and not for others, is as dangerous as the virus we all seek to protect ourselves from. Just because we understand that we all need to do our part to eradicate this dangerous virus does not mean that one major health concern should outweigh another, and mandate seems to have taken on a new meaning: do what you're told, or else. If we're taking the humanistic approach to this COVID-19 virus, should we not then take the same approach when it comes to the risk and the treatment for it? Personal experiences are important to consider because they give real-life examples of the after-effects people face when they become victims of vaccine injuries. According to the CDC VAERS reports, over 19,000 people have died from receiving the vaccine, and almost 800,000 have serious impairment. Isn't a failure at a rate of 1 in 5,000 more than enough to be unwilling to subject my son to that possibility and live in regret when and if something negative were to happen to him? To ignore vaccine injuries as part of research and statistics as relates to COVID is as irresponsible as ignoring COVID as the risks that it poses as well. My child is not your experiment, and you may not mandate us, the parents, into making our children such in this "our land of the free" because we are also the home of the brave. That's why I'm here today. I, for one, will use that God-given freedom to stand up for what's best for those who cannot stand up for themselves.
Please finish your thought.
There's some articles of the Declaration of Independence, but let it be a reminder that we are one nation. We are under God, and we're protected by our God-given right to freedom of choice.
Thank you. Kimberly Evans.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the Board for allowing us parents to speak tonight. Contrary to what many people who come here to speak in favor of equity may think, minorities do not need your handouts, head starts, or an extra step, or what you call equity, to succeed in life. Minorities have been and are successful without it. Excellence is what the school board should be promoting if they want what's best for all students, not equity. Equity is manipulation. If equality of outcome is guaranteed for students, why would any student try their best if they'll end up in the same spot? There's no incentive for achievement if there's nothing to achieve. It removes competition, which was a motivating factor in my school education. People want to have a good class ranking to get into the best college and have the best outcome. Equity is unjust and holds back minority students who want something better than an equitable outcome for their education. There are states who are actually denying GT classes to white and Asian students based on their race and only allowing minority students into these programs. Stop holding students back. Don't you realize that you're putting students into these programs solely based on their race when they are not academically ready for these classes? It holds them back even more. Good parents and school staff want excellence for our kids, not equity, minority parents included. Don't speak for us. Stop telling us minorities that we need equity to succeed, and please stop telling us how the system's racist towards us. You have no place to tell me or any other minority what they need to succeed. For those in favor of CRT-based curriculum, you're really saying that minorities are less capable and need your help. This is a lie. Give people the tools and let them earn it. America has a class issue, not a race issue. Wokeness creates a generation of excuses, white guilt, and self-pity. My husband and I were looking at the training that was recently given to teachers, and we were floored that they're teaching our teachers to treat our children differently based on their race. Disgusting. Don't tell us CRT isn't in schools. It's clear as day. Our own Equity and Inclusion Officer stated in a recent interview, right here in the Carroll Magazine, this was her quote, "I know white people feel like that people are looking at them like they're racist, and that's also a hard pill to swallow." She hides CRT under "history" when it's not history we're against. It's the divisive spin on history that they want to teach our children. She later stated that she wants to bring-
Excuse me. As Mr. Kyler stated, we're not to single out or discuss personnel.
Okay. I didn't mention her name. I didn't know.
There's only one in that position, so.
All right. So all I'm saying is, parents need to stay involved, and this curriculum promotes discrimination, and it will continue to divide us parents, as you can see at the local school board meetings and across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mercedes.
Good evening. I am one of the chairs of the Carroll County Chapter of Moms for Liberty. First, I would like to thank each of you for representing the majority of the constituents in Carroll County by initially making masks optional in our school system. It has always been important that the local boards of education have the ability to represent the constituents that elected them. It is very concerning that Maryland Department of Education has engaged in such questionable practices as the stunning overreach of authority by overriding our locally-elected Board of Education and also disregarding our own governor's directive that the local county should have the authority to make these important decisions based on the data coming from these jurisdictions alone. By not pushing back against this egregious overreach of control and abuse of power, we are signaling to them that we will no longer be an independent county capable of making important decisions on behalf of the community that it knows best, and we are complicit in allowing the precedents that they have set. By not fighting against them, we will be allowing MSDE to bully us into submission. The constituents of this county are greatly concerned that this is only the beginning of state overreach. First, it was the mask mandates, and our fear is that next it will be vaccine mandates and continue from there. The precedent has been set that any time a local decision is made that the State Board disagrees with, that they could simply step- disagrees with, that they could simply step in and overrule our local board's authority. That is an abuse of power, and this simply cannot occur. We cannot allow the State Board of Education to attempt to control our local government. I understand there is only so much that you can do, but on behalf of your constituents, we strongly encourage you and legal counsel to stand up against the State Board of Education. We do not comply with the overreach of power. We, the people, elected you to your position to represent our voice, and that is what we are asking you to do. Secondly, we ask for the political neutrality policy to be completed and implemented expeditiously. It has been months since this policy was requested, and we cannot drag our feet any longer. We also ask that the policy be communicated effectively to all CCPS employees. We also request that educators be reminded of what educational materials and tools that they are allowed to use in the classroom, and what is Carroll County-approved. Thank you for your time and dedication to working for our wonderful county and our schools. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Kit Hart.
I want to start by thanking those of you who believe in and stand up for parental choice. The data I share tonight is directed to anyone on the board who is considering the idea of mandating a COVID vaccine for school-aged children. We are all incredibly lucky to live in an age when vaccines for polio, measles, rubella, and other illnesses that disproportionately affect the young are available. However, as we well know by now, COVID is not an illness that disproportionately affects the kids. According to the CDC's own data, in the past two years, 0.0007% of children in the U.S. have died from this disease. We all know that our kids are at greater risk from the flu, drowning, or suicide, but let's think about that number. 25% of our country's population is comprised of children, but they only contribute to 0.4 of all COVID deaths. That is why, during the FDA's Vaccine Advisory Committee meeting last month, 16 out of 18 doctors present were very concerned that the cascading effect of their approval would thrust this mRNA biologic shot upon healthy children, and that not only do not need the vaccine, but would be better off without it. And that is a direct quote. You wouldn't know that information by listening to the media. They assume that the public is simple-minded enough to either not question the long-term effects of a one-year-old vaccine, but to believe it comes with no risks. Outside the media, many doctors, scientists, and researchers have serious concerns with this vaccine. The problem is, none of them are paid by the CDC, FDA, NIH, or the pharmaceutical companies that are selling them, and therefore, they are not given the platform to voice their concerns or to have a healthy scientific dialogue. True science invites skepticism. In fact, skepticism is the essence of science. As the old adage says, "If everyone in the room is thinking the same thing, then no one is thinking." Parents, not the CDC, should be able to decide if they want to put their child at risk of COVID, or at risk of myocarditis, heart attacks, or the long-term threats that are impossible to know at this point. The American people have given the CDC too much credence. While we recognize that they are considered the experts, we must take their recommendations with not only a grain of salt, but an entire handful of it. By way of example, the CDC suggests that ordering beef pinker than well-done is unsafe. They advise exercising 60 minutes daily. And how many of us consume our recommended four to five cups of fruits and vegetables and eat no more than 200 calories worth of sugar each day? We have to use our critical thinking skills and make the decisions that are right for our family and our children. Rather than treating people, and especially children, like robots directed to identical prescriptions, we should recognize the nuance of individuals' needs and risks. So please do everything in your power to fight back against a vaccine mandate for the children of Carroll County. Thank you.
Thank you. Jo Hamilton.
Good evening, board members. Today, you're going to be discussing an updated politically-neutral policy for the classroom. While I still don't understand what events in Carroll County classrooms drove this topic into the forefront, I do understand why the board feels it's important to discuss an update to the policy, which was originally created over 30 years ago. That all being said, my concern with updating this policy is in the potential for scope creep of what is considered political or non-disruptive student expression in applying the policy. For example, in discussion of protests as part of American history, it's easy to see how some could want teachers to avoid talking about the topics altogether, to avoid favoritism. But it also leaves out important events in our nation's history for the sake of bluntly ensuring that our teachers do not seem to be favoring a certain side or issue. What we have seen in the extremes of other school districts in the country is using this type of framework to either remove or dilute sensitive historical topics, like the history of slavery in the United States, or in one disturbing comment that a school system presented, they should present both sides of the Holocaust. I don't believe that the Carroll County Public Schools intend for their policy of neutrality to change school operations in this way, but I worry as a parent that this will burden our teachers to second-guess any attempt to connect with their students, or personalize their teaching with their own experiences or ideas, for fear of some word or phrase being reported as some sort of bias. Our teachers are already overworked and burdened, and putting the strain on them without any clear evidence of ongoing problems in our school system could hurt our ability to attract and retain the best teachers. Part of the policy also states that teachers should not prevent non-disruptive expression of student viewpoints on political issues, parties, or candidates. I do applaud and encourage students to have a forum to discuss opposing views and opinions, but I wonder how the term "non-disruptive" would be applied. One student in Carroll County Public Schools was recently told that having a pride flag in the school system was a disruption because of the comments it invited from other students. So how does a teacher define what is disruptive and what is not? Our goal as a school system can and should be to welcome healthy debate between opposing viewpoints, and to learn to respect both those who you share your beliefs and those who you disagree with. I implore you, as you consider the update to the politically-neutral policy, to avoid placing undue burdens and restrictions on teachers who seemingly have been professional and already carrying out the spirit of your policy updates, without the need for more cumbersome and entangling guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Ash Tough.
I'm gonna speak mostly about something that happened to me a few weeks ago. Um, so, all in one day in October, I was called queer, I was called a fag, I was told to kill myself. Over 10 times, I was told to kill myself. And after that, there were still a few incidents here and there, not as many as that one day. But if Carroll County is a safe environment, then why did that happen to me? And how will you ensure that Carroll County is a safe environment for everyone? Yes, I did report it to the administrators, and there has been action taken. But every day, I fear, out in the hallways, that something is gonna happen to me, because it's way too clear that I'm the one who reported it. I fear every day that someone's gonna hit me or beat me up. I don't know. And the whole process of reporting it was tiring enough. I had to take time out of my day of learning just to report it. I wonder how we can educate everyone before this happens to anyone else. It happens every day to someone, but I hope we can educate everyone on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Lockard, does it make sense to follow up with-
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I was gonna ask Ms. Gramata to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I was passing, and I'd ask you the same thing.
Plus, maybe while you're asking her to follow up, maybe we could have a statement coming from the deists concerning this?
Sure, I'll start. I mean, I've said before, and I'll say it again. Thank you. You know, I'm sorry, I was taking notes, Ash. I appreciate your candor and your honesty there. We don't want any of our students to experience that. I'm glad you reported it. I'm glad that you're saying that there were some things done, but you shouldn't have to endure that, right? And so, I think that's your frustration, and I hear that, and I'm sorry that that was your experience. Like I said, I do want, and it's, you know, we want all our students to feel safe and comfortable in our schools, welcomed, so, Ms. Gramata, if you could, please, and any other board members.
Yeah, I'll echo, you know, what you said there, Dr. Lockard. You know, there's, unfortunately, you know, these are things that do happen in our schools, and unfortunately, these are things that have happened for decades. It's gotten worse, and I think social media is a big part of that. It's not fair for our children, any child, no matter how they identify who they are, that they endure any type of bullying or harassment of any type. You know, we have talked about the bullying issues and harassment issues, and again, it's all around. It's not just one particular group versus another. It is all around, and it is unfortunate, and it does need to stop. So we, you know, I think eventually, at some point, we need to relook at our bullying policies, I think, and just, you know, buckle down on it again. It needs to be all around. Bullying and harassment issues have got to stop.
And I just wanted to comment, certainly in your pain, Ash, we could, we could really feel for you and with you. And during your comments, you asked a very probing question: "How can we educate everyone?" Well, that's what we need to be doing. We don't need to stop certain conversations. We need to be having these conversations, because again, it is affecting our youth. And really, if it affects the youth, it's affecting all of us. And it may not have happened to some parents or some students personally, but just hearing that it's happened to one, well, if we can help the one, we need to do that. So again, thank you, Dr. Lockard, for making your statement, and again, Ash, I agree. We need to educate everyone.
And that's why I'm looking forward to, you know, Don and I met the other day with the curriculum committee, and we briefly discussed the new curriculum for a course that's been coming out regarding community, and part of that new curriculum is to have those conversations of the high school part, you know, having everyone diversified, discussing how things affect them in the world. That's something we need to learn how to do, because unfortunately, Davanti, I think you can even, you know, say that you've seen this too, you know, kids know too much how to talk online and not face-to-face. They don't know how to have those conversations anymore, and I think that's something that's important with that class.
Davanti?
Thank you so much, Ash, for speaking up. Your words were very meaningful, and I know that they impacted us a lot. I just hate how desensitized I am to hearing that from a student, because I have heard that from many students in the past. And again, I just hate how desensitized I am that I'm not overtly shocked anymore. So again, I truly think that yes, social media has had an impact, but we do need to be looking at what's happening in our hallways, what's happening in our classroom, and also how certain groups are being disproportionately harmed by these actions, such as the LGBTQ-plus community, that community of students in our school system.
Okay, all right. Thank you all.
And as per our directions, when something comes up, we do want staff to meet with somebody, and I was passing a note over to say that as you were speaking. The only thing that I want to comment on, it is very two-edged to report something, and sometimes that causes more fear. And again, and I've said it before, I encourage anybody that's a victim of bullying to try to find somebody within the school system that they trust to go to, and it's hard. It might be the principal, the assistant principal, the SRO, a counselor, or a teacher. And it's hard, because reporting it can raise your anxiety, as you said it did.
Any other comments? I would say education is the key to this, so. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Kyler.
Thank you. Lindsey James.
Thank you for all your words just now and sensitive response to Ash. I live in Carroll County with my husband and somewhat disruptive two-year-old in the back right there. Our daughter will go to public school here, my niece already does, so I'm here to weigh in on how we educate our kids in this school district. The stories of the kids that spoke last month and Ash's story today, as some of you acknowledge, need to be met with concrete and proactive actions. We need systematic support for marginalized students. We need classes that teach more honest, unbleached history than the history I was taught in school. We need programs that build a culture that celebrates diversity instead of one that pressures kids to hide who they are just to feel safe and accepted. Why? The reason should be obvious. We all want our kids to grow up strong and confident in who they are. For me, though, there's more to it. Every year on Passover, Jews retell the story of their slavery in Egypt in the present tense. We do this both to appreciate the freedom we enjoy today, and to remind ourselves that even today, we are not all free. We have so much work to do. The struggle never ends. I want my kid to learn about the ugly injustices in the world and in her neighborhood. I want her to know about the crimes perpetrated by her own white, southern ancestors, and those endured by her Russian Jewish ancestors. Because the cliche is true: knowledge is power. Learning has always empowered me and given me a sense of purpose. Why wouldn't I want that same fire for my daughter and for her whole generation? So what is this struggle that's concerned me, that concerns me? Isn't slavery over? Aren't drinking fountains desegregated? I've heard the concerned parents speak as if we're living in this beautiful harmony, while some vague curriculum corrupts their children, makes them feel guilty or victimized. As I've yet to hear specifics, I have trouble believing these guilt trips are common. What's easy to see is the students that have spoken about their experience with racial slurs and harassment. It's easy to see the recency of our racist past and present-day discrimination. Ash's story: "The last people to have lived as slaves pre-1865 died as recently as the 1970s and 80s. In the 1980s, the KKK marched the streets of Westminster, but the Black Panthers were not allowed. Maryland law enforcement agencies counted 40 reported hate crimes in 2020, double the number reported in 2019. Racism and harassment of LGBTQ people is a fact in this country-
Please finish your thoughts.
-and in this county. Ignoring it doesn't make it go away. DEI programs are not divisive. Ignorance is divisive, and ignorance is oppressive." Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Grody.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Carroll County School Bus Contractors Association, our school bus drivers and assistants. We are appreciative of the action item tonight for approval of the recognition bonus for bus drivers and assistants after our successful meeting yesterday with CCPS staff. Our essential employees have actively transported students throughout the pandemic to and from school for extracurricular activities and extended learning opportunities. Carroll County has been and is still the leader in Maryland for education and the transportation services provided by our independent contractors due to the dedication of our employees. Our goal is to retain these employees and recruit new applicants to fill the driver shortage, and to reward the positive actions and commitments of our employees daily. We will continue our discussions regarding additional employee compensation with the goal by December to finalize recommendations. At the October board meeting, I joined John O'Neill in presenting the Transportation Reimbursement Report. I strongly urge the board to adopt both the committee's recommendations and the three additional Contractor Association requests. The three requests were: a second-matching administrative allotment in January to cover overhead costs- matching administrative allotment in January to cover overhead costs; the second, adjust the per-mile divisor for fuel from 7.0 to 6.5 miles per gallon to offset DEF costs; and the third, noting that a 3% salary minimum may not be sufficient to address employee shortages. It is my understanding that these three requests have not been included in the fiscal year '23 budget. We respectfully request full reimbursement to cover our rising operational expenses. We thank you for your continued support tonight on behalf of our employees and for our contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Terry.
Thank you, board members, for allowing me to speak. My name is Lisa Terry, and I have two little boys in Carroll County that go to Alma Wolf. I also helped out with other kids that, unfortunately, parents had to work or single parents could not school their kids during COVID when we were shut down. But I'm here today to let you all know that I have major concerns about the children's COVID jabs. I'm not allowing my children to receive these jabs and asking for you all to not allow them to mandate it for, for recreation or for schooling. There's not enough information on this vaccine for adults, let alone children, especially the side effects, short or long term. As it stands, there is a major issue on side effects on young boys aged 12 to 17, which is myocarditis, as well as it's still, they're authorizing it under emergency use. It is still not approved. I'm hoping to get ahead while we can and hope that you would support an optional choice for all. Again, us being parents, we should be left with options to decide what is best for our family. I am a parent who will pull my kids out of Carroll County public schools and most likely will homeschool if and when the mandate comes. And I won't be the only one, which therefore could affect government and state funding as well as hurting great school staff members, which I do not want to see happen. Please allow this to be an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Barnes.
Hello. I just, I wanted to speak, I want to talk about mandates, but I, I was very moved by, by your, your daughter's testimony. That's heart-wrenching for any parent. And, and I think that all of us, including parents, not just children, because children get it from us, is we've just forgotten how to be kind and respectful to one another. And that's a basic practice. I have a trans person who comes into my shop all the time. And this person has a lot of, is a very troubled person. It's been very difficult. And so, but the way that I speak to this person is by recognize, recognizing the person within. I think there's such hyper-awareness right now on the physical, on the material body, you know, identity is all about what color you are, what, you know, what race you are, what, you know, what's your gender and all of that. And I, I feel like this hyper-focus on the material aspect of who we are is what defines us. And it's not. It's, it's our character within. And that's, that's how I feel about that. So I'm very sorry. I, my son also was bullied when he was in third grade. And it was when Trump was running, and he went to a largely African-American school, which was fine. And, you know, he had many friends. But because of that year and because of all the heightened tension with adults, it all trickled down to the children. And the children were expressing all of these really nasty things that they heard from their parents, and it was coming down to the kids. And so my son was called a racist, which, you know, in third grade from, you know, me and my partner, who happened to be the department chair of the Education Department at Salisbury University, who was a champion of diversity and inclusion. So I understand this very well. No one should be discriminated. Now, having said that, I, I really believe no one should be discriminated against. And, and, and we have to be really careful because we talk about inclusion and we talk about diversity. And a lot of people who are championing that are, the people that I know are also the ones who are the first to say, you're an anti-masker, you're anti-vaccine, you're anti-science. So we have to be really careful when you, if you really mean that you don't believe in discrimination and you believe in diversity, you are going to have to come to terms with half the population of this country who do not want to get vaccinated and who do not want to wear these masks anymore. If you want to vaccinate your children, and now everybody can vaccinate their kids to their hearts' content, and that's, they're your children, you can vaccinate them. And because of that, I'm, I'm wondering, when are we going to get rid of these masks? Because you can vaccinate now. And, and Heart was right. Point 0007 chance that you, that, that, that your child will be harmed, okay?
Please finish your thoughts.
Okay, so, I got distracted.
I know.
I mean, that, that was heavy, and it hurt, it hurts all of us deeply. But it's important that you, and, and you've been a wonderful school board. I feel very lucky. But I, I do wonder, you know, how long are we going to have to live under this? Because you guys said we could, we could, you know, have it optional. And I'm just wondering, how much fight, you know, are you guys putting up? And how much fight do we need to, to, you know, where do we need to take the fight? Because this has gone on way too long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our citizen participation. At this time, we will have employee groups. Ms. McCullough, come on up for CCA, and happy birthday.
Ms. Herbert, I was going to say, if anybody wanted to leave in the meantime.
Oh, yeah. If anybody wants to get up and leave, by all means, while we, if you want to, if you're.
But feel free to stick around.
Yes, but, yes, please feel.
Feel free to stay.
Please come. Please stay if you want.
And, and you're not timed. You're not timed, so just hang tight while they walk out. And if you want, we could fill the gap, and we could all sing "Happy Birthday."
Let's do it. Ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Come on. Happy birthday to Teresa. Happy birthday to you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Superintendent Locker and members of the Board of Education. I'm Teresa Basler McCullough, President of the Carroll County Education Association, who represents the teachers, counselors, RNs, speech-language pathologists, OTs, and PTs whose plates are full. When I initially prepared this report, I made a request to the membership to submit some areas of gratitude connecting to their job. I prefaced the request that no matter what life or job, or your job throws at you, there is something to be thankful for. My intention took a turn from a positive idea to a true reality check. I came to realize and reflected on what our educators are facing in another year in the pandemic world. Their plates are overflowing, not only with the demands of the job, but with added duties, such as preparing technology for absent students, collecting work from quarantined students, covering classes while losing planning time with a substitute shortage, new technology and testing demands while attending to students' social and emotional needs after not being in school for 18 months, and the list continues. I conclude that we've hit an all-time low morale. I'm worried for our educators and the profession on so many levels. I appreciate the conversation I had with Dr. Locker last week, assuring me that unless there are federal mandates involving a need in the classroom, no new initiatives should be coming down the pike. For the sake of our educators and all employees, I am asking for relief. Fortunately, I did receive some areas of appreciation, mostly where fellow colleagues were a support system. Others include: the lunch crew is a daily good laugh and helps me get through the day; family support; educators who provide access for our deaf, hard-of-hearing students by adding captions to videos in Google Classrooms; my team, my work family; administration at my school and team have been so kind and supportive and have hugged each other through lots of tough times and tears these past two years; community members who show they recognize the challenges we face in our profession and still show support in any way they can, a coffee, some candy, a kind note, or email. Recognizing the challenge and then showing kindness and support can go a long way. And this ties beautifully into the upcoming American Education Week. Excuse me. On a president's personal level, I am thankful for a leader in Carroll County Public Schools who has been supportive, attentive, and helps to make needed adjustments to an issue at hand. She has helped with resolving inequities from mixed messaging, including SLOs, planning time, last year's flexible Wednesdays, prep time for virtual learning, and adequate staffing, to mention a few. And I am thankful for Chief Cindy McCabe. Thank you, Cindy. So, even in times of challenges and difficulty, we know positivity is a choice. While I wish everyone a full plate at Thanksgiving, let's take some servings off all employees' plates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Steele's not here? Okay. And now we will move on to the COVID-19 updates. Dr. Locker.
Hey, I was looking for Susan Doyle. Were we not seeing Ms. Doyle this evening? Okay, she was invited, and I know she sent a, a presentation. Okay, so we haven't, we haven't seen, Carl, have you seen Susan at all? Okay. So, board members, what typically would have happened was, we would have gone through, and you have that information, the, the typical metrics that Ms. Doyle reports. I did have a couple of additional comments to, to make, but not so much related to what the Health Department was going to present. How would you like, like to proceed?
Dr. Locker, make your statements.
Yeah, sure. Well, some of my updates were, as it relates to, you know, vaccinations. First of all, Carroll County Public Schools doesn't have any plans to require COVID vaccinations for students. Okay? We're, we're working, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're working to be in compliance with the federal OSHA and state MoSh mandate. But we're not going to choose the option to mandate vaccines for employees. We have a high percentage of our employees that have been vaccinated, but we're going to option, take the option of, for anybody unvaccinated, they'll have to submit to weekly testing for, this is employees, okay? We anticipate that there'll be a, I believe it's a January 4th deadline. I know that there is a Fifth Circuit stay to that right now, Mr. Omealy, but we are, we are planning for, for the event that we would have to comply, as we've said all along.
Yeah, and, and there is a stay. It is not an injunction. There are several cases across the country. There is no case in Maryland. The expectation is that the cases will be consolidated in a single circuit next week and that we should probably have a ruling prior to the first of the year. So the best advice is to prepare for the possibility that it will be mandated because Maryland is one of the 28 states that by law has an agreement with OSHA, which would make the OSHA emergency temporary standard applicable to state and local government as well as to private industry, only for employees.
Right.
Nothing involving students.
That's correct. And so, thank you, Mr. Omealy. So, Mr. Diaz is heading the effort, working with key staff, stakeholders, legal counsel, and our employee groups as we prepare for that requirement. We're also seeking a solution there that will be no, no cost to employees. We've worked with Maryland Department of Health in securing testing as well as their resources to support testing sites regionally. Still a lot of details to work through, such as determining, you know, obviously which staff need the, the weekly testing, the location setup notification, all those things that come with it. But we're still well underway. I appreciate Mr. Diaz and his work in helping us be prepared for that, should, you know, when, when that time comes, January 4th or whenever.
And Dr. Locker, does, does, are we planning to have multiple locations for, for teachers to be tested?
Yes, yes. We had submitted for seven, I believe, and I know you're still working on those, those details. So those would be sort of regionally, you know, all around.
And Brenda, if you could get a chance to go to the very, next to the last page on this, and it does state the times and the dates for our children's clinics, which I think is very important. And we've already had over 480 children vaccinated, if that is your choice.
Right. So parents who want to choose to vaccinate their children, we even have a couple of our schools, Winter Smol High School this Saturday, 12 to 4:30. South Carroll is the following Saturday, November 20th, 11 to 4:00. So there's lots of opportunities along with the Health Department's vaccination clinic. Well, you can see the different locations posted there. And this is on our website, in the board meeting agenda documents that folks can find, all this, as well as the Health Department's. Carl?
It also got emailed out to all elementary, middle parents.
Okay. And so, information went out to elementary and middle parents, if, if they're choosing to vaccinate their children, where they can do that and access that.
So, and I want to reiterate what Dr. Locker said. We are not into mandating vaccines. That is not our job. Ms. Pataglia?
I actually have a couple of questions. And Mr. Omealy, you can probably answer some of these as well with us. Has there been any more discussion with the State Board regarding when they will reevaluate the mask mandate?
My understanding that is going to be on an upcoming agenda, I believe in January, but don't quote me on that. And they're going to reevaluate that.
Okay. My next question is going to be, can we, as a board, send a letter requesting them to reevaluate that sooner? Because, I mean, vaccines are out, so what's the problem?
Absolutely. The board always has the ability to express the board's sentiments to the State Board. And that would be true for the board as a body, which would have to develop a statement in a public meeting before sending it to the State Board. Or board members individually on their own behalf and not speaking on behalf of the board also have the right to lobby the State Board and to sign up for possible participation, although the State Board only allows a limited number of speakers, unlike this board, which allows everybody an opportunity to speak.
And I will say, I have been invited on Tuesday to speak at this, at the state meeting. And I will be voicing my opinion about masks. And since the vaccines are out, my personal opinion is, I don't see why we don't open up on January 2nd with the option of, of masks. Now, we have to discuss that, but that is my personal feeling, that the vaccines are here. And they are, they are asking me several things. How did we implement? What are, what's, what are, what is good for the mask, or what is bad for the mask? And the next step? So, I know my next step. And they have, I think, four presidents of boards that are going to speak on Tuesday at, at the, at the meeting. So, I am one of them, and we will have to talk about that. And.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Did you have another question?
Yeah.
Can I, can I piggyback on to this first?
Sure.
What, what the State Board promised was a town hall next week. What, what the State Board promised was a town hall next week. I haven't seen it advertised, and Mrs. Herbert's got invited to do this on Tuesday in the AM?
Afternoon.
Afternoon, not in the evening, but in the afternoon, but I haven't seen it advertised. The town hall, I would think, somebody can get on and ask questions, so please look for it. And, and the other thing he did say is, they would discuss it at, I think it's December 7th, it's, it's their December meeting they're going to discuss it, because he didn't feel that in October, numbers were dropped enough for him to talk about it, and, but nobody, nobody's posted what that agenda is, what they're going to talk about, what they're going to look at, and we were promised in the beginning, monthly review, and we asked about county by county and weren't told. I asked in a letter, why does our mechanic need to wear a mask to change brakes? Why do we all need to sit here in a room full with no students to wear masks to keep students in school, et cetera, et cetera? So, I, I think we're all trying to talk about it and push for it, and hopefully, it doesn't run all the way to February.
Right. I was going to ask, regarding what the state handed down to us, can we still appeal the decision?
The, the tie for filing an appeal is, is over, but, you know, I've, I've given my opinions on the likelihood of success on that, and I don't think I need to go over that again, but the time for appealing has, has come and gone.
Okay, because, I mean, we, we've been hearing from a lot of people, you know, we should have done this, we should have done an appeal a long time ago, when this came down the pipeline, and we wanted to.
Well, I guess that's the opinion that you're expressing, I haven't heard that that's the sentiment of the board as a body, and the board as a body would have to vote and decide to do that. You know, a lot of people don't understand that Maryland, unlike many other states, is a state-driven system, and it has been since 1865, and the courts have routinely and frequently said that the Maryland State Board of Education has total visitatorial authority over all matters affecting public education of the state work, state of Maryland, and the last word, and the courts have routinely deferred. And, you know, the, the point is, I think that any attempt to appeal from a state regulation issued by the State Board, approved by the AELR Committee, would be an exercise in futility. It, it may be a sign of support, but that's no reason to bring legal action. There are other ways of showing support for sentiments, by lobbying, by writing letters, by speaking at State Board of Education meetings, going to court is not the appropriate way to do it. That's my opinion.
I think a lot in the public are just very concerned that, you know, this is what they did with the growing masks. Now, I made it very clear, I wanted to at least attempt something, because if it wasn't, it's not masks, it's going to be something else. They can do whatever they want in whatever fashion, and I think that's something important we need to send a message, is that we want local authority back.
Well, you never had local authority over this issue in the first place, once the state issued a regulation. When Governor Hogan said it was local authority, the board did act in accordance with local policy, the local process, and that's all well and good. The State Board issued the regulation. That regulation is binding upon every single school system in the state of Maryland, and you don't have the authority under Maryland law to say, in Carroll County, we're going to do something different contrary to State Board of Education regulations. You just don't have that legal authority. I mean, we may not like it, but that's the law, and if somebody were to tell you differently, they just don't understand the law.
But I think the, the main thing is, we need to send a message that we want local authority back, that, that enough is enough, we want local authority back, we don't, they don't need to babysit us. We are elected, they are not, and we are hired by the public, they are not.
I'm not disagreeing with you. Pass a resolution, if that's what you want to do.
Board members, I make a motion, we sent a letter to the State Board of Education requesting to get local authority back prior to a decision in January, before they even discuss it.
I'll second the motion for, for the discussion purposes. I, I did want to kind of.
Yeah, I know, I, I know Mr. Kyler had questions, and Ms. Savigny. Now we have a motion, but we're, do you want to ask these questions first?
I think if the motion's on the floor.
We need to discuss it.
We need to discuss the motion, and Roberts rules the order, the first person to discuss should be the person that made the motion, if she so chooses.
I, I think we definitely need to send a clear message to the State Board. It's not about masks, it's not about, you know, getting that taken, we just want our local authority back to make our own decisions. We are elected members of this community, the State Board of Education are not. We are the ones responsible for the decisions of this community, and I think that we need to send, send a clear message that, you know, I mean, we're hearing from parents, we're, we're hearing from the kids, you know, rec councils, I mean, it's more than just one thing, it is multiple things, and like I said, if they did the mask mandate, they can turn around to whatever else they want, and I think we need to send a clear message, it belongs to local authority, and that's it.
Okay, Ms. Savigny, would you like to go first?
Sure. Well, one of the things that concerns me is, yeah, I wanted to ask some questions about, we were given some, at least some talking points, I wouldn't say assurances, but at least some talking points from the state, saying that they were going to discuss off-ramps, that they were going to discuss monthly reevaluations, and those things have not happened. And coupling that with the fact that, you know, the vaccine is now available for, for children when parents choose to do that, so that takes away the need for the masks, so at what point do, can, can we have this lifted? So I, I agree with you, I'd like to, you know, Mr. Omealy, you said something about a resolution, I'd like to basically say to the community, we know that there's a lot of support in this community to remove, to make masks optional, right? Leave the choice to the parents. And so I think that we should promote for the, the community to write similar letters to the state, voicing our opinion, and voicing that you want the folks that you elected as part of the representatives in this county to make those decisions, that, that they're taking away your right to elect people that stand for the same things that you stand for.
It's not necessarily that, it's just, they took away local authority, period.
Right.
That we can't make any type of decisions regarding any of this, and I just want this precedent to be set, that local authority is local authority, and that's it. I mean, I, I'm, I will admit, I am scared to death a vaccine mandate is going to come down the pipeline for our kids. No, absolutely not. And as a board member, I will clearly state this right now in public, if that comes down the pipeline, I will pull my own children from public school.
I will as well.
You know, something needs to be done, we need to send a clear message that local authority is local authority, and that is it.
Mr. Kyler?
And, and I agree, if it gets too cumbersome to do a resolution, to, to decide, we need to say the best thing we can say this evening to make that happen quickly, rather than slowly. If this doesn't pass, or even if we do that, I encourage each individual, for against, whatever your feeling is, to write a letter to them. Again, we've said, we were promised a monthly review, and last month, the total discussion was, I don't want to talk about it until December, because the numbers haven't gone up, down enough, or up enough, or wherever he thinks they ought to go.
Doesn't mean they shouldn't plan for it, right?
You think? You think? So I encourage each person, you can go online and see what they said, or talk to a, a State Board member, and I encourage everybody to get involved. I, I hope something comes out Tuesday, I don't know if people can go on and ask panel members questions, or what, but, but we need to make it known that, that what our position is.
I know, I was just invited, and I have an update on Monday afternoon prior to this Zoom meeting, so that's, that's all I know, and I know the three questions.
If I could.
Yes.
My, my recommendation to you is, if you're going to do a resolution, that you keep it focused on an issue that the State Board has authority over, and they have the regulation, and your resolution, I take it would be to encourage the State Board to lift the, the regulation, at least on a local basis. If you are going to advocate for some larger local control, your resolution shouldn't be going to the State Board, it should be going to the Maryland General Assembly, because Section 4-108 of the Education Article of the Annotated Code specifically says that each county board shall, to the best of its ability, carry out the applicable provisions of this article and the bylaws, rules, regulations, and policies of the State Board. If you want to advocate for local control contrary to what the State Board regulates, then your resolution should go to the General Assembly to state, to change state law, not to the State Board, because the State Board doesn't have any authority to overturn Section 4-108.
That doesn't make sense. If they don't have authority to overturn, but they have authority to overstep whatever we say.
They have authority to issue regulations. That 4-108 statute says that you have to follow. If you want to give the local board more authority, you've got to advocate for a change in the statute, unless you want to focus it more narrowly on the regulation that the State Board passed, rather than the larger, larger local control issue.
So, I, I don't think we're necessarily, I mean, we definitely want local control wherever possible, I mean, that's always been our stance on, in, in general, as a board, however, for this particular issue, I would like to keep it as focused as possible.
The mask issue.
To, on the mask issue, that we want them to release the mask mandate.
Right.
What is the most effective way to make that resolution?
Well, you make a resolution saying, the Board of Education of Carroll County strongly encourages the Maryland State Board of Education to rescind the mask mandate set forth in COMAR 13A.01.07, or at least to modify that regulation to allow each local Board of Education to adopt its own policy along those lines, something like that.
Okay.
And I don't know if you would want to do something now, or whether you would want to float something for an action item at the next meeting.
No, I don't need to do it now.
You know, that's, that's within your prerogative.
It needs to be done now. It, it should not go on for another month.
Well, I have a couple of questions, because again, we don't have all of the information, because again, you're participating in some kind of session on Tuesday, so we don't know what the outcome of that is. Is it just to hear varying opinions concerning the regulation, or how we're actually implementing the mask mandate? And again, it was my understanding too, that I thought the board was going to be taking a look at the numbers in December, to see if maybe a change needs to be made. So again, I would like to, to know for sure those responses for myself.
Okay, Mr.
I tried to look today, after she told me, I looked at the MAVE site, and I looked at the MSDE site, and saw nothing about a town hall. They've, they've been, my humble opinion, they've been very slow even putting out when the next meeting is. I was told it was, it would probably be December 7th, but, and I don't even know if they normally meet on Tuesdays or what, but, so, yeah, I, like you, I wanted to see what was going on with this, but like, like Ms. Savigny said, I, I don't see what it hurts to send a resolution now saying, we're asking this, and hopefully that gets it considered on Tuesday and, and, and at their December meeting, where if we wait, you know, I think last time, I, I've sent some letters, because everything was so rushed when this came out, I didn't even get responses, and I feel like I did them at the last minute, I think, I think regardless of what we vote on, I'm probably going to write an individual letter, and, and, and say, I'm not speaking for the board, this is Kenny Kyler's opinion, for what it's worth, and, and do it, but I think we should do this also.
All right, and here's, here was my invitation, okay? And it says, thank you for agreeing to participate in a special meeting of the State Board next Tuesday, November 16th. As I explained, the purpose of this special meeting is to obtain on how the mask mandate is working in your respective school system. At this writing, my understanding is that the State Board would like you to address the filing, and I mentioned some of these questions. How did you experience with implementation? Generally, how is it working? Three, what areas of concern do you have now moving on, and would you recommend any changes to the regulations? So, that's it. And then I got a, it is scheduled from 1:00 to 4:00, but I know, I think the three, the four presidents will be on at 3:00 o'clock, and, and I think we have like, an hour in our block.
I don't know, I wasn't given a copy of the invitation, so.
Yes.
So, if, if, if you are inclined to make a resolution, I think there needs to be a motion stating the proposed resolution, needs to be seconded, needs to be voted on.
Okay, we already have one motion on the floor already, and Andy, could you restate that motion, please?
I have it, I have it on the computer, I'm just if I can.
Mr. Omealy, while, while she's pulling that up.
Okay.
While she's pulling that up, what is the, the benefit to a resolution versus a letter from the board?
It's a statement of the board's position. You could do it as a letter to the board, I think what we're talking about, one way or the other, is the board as a body advocating, you could do it as a letter. The only thing is, that the board has to approve the letter in a public session, so that would involve somebody writing it out, presenting it to the board, reviewing it, voting on it, and that may take more time than you have this evening.
But if, excuse me, if we do a resolution this evening, could I read that on, on them at my meeting?
You absolutely could, you could send it to them tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, but we would have to write that tonight and approve it while we're all sitting here.
It doesn't have to be a long one, I don't think.
No.
Okay.
All right, I'm waiting for the actual.
Just be a minute.
That's fine.
We have to figure out how to stop this.
And I'd also do want to talk about, a little bit about regarding, regarding mask breaks and rec council use in our schools, because we did hear from quite a few parents about mask breaks, we've gotten a couple of letters, I've seen some things on social media, you know, kids, especially with now the heat coming on, it's getting hotter inside the schools in the mask, so we need, I think we need to make sure that, yes, our kids need mask breaks, that they're going to need it, and as far as rec councils too, what to do, because I can tell you right now, wrestling last night, I was not comfortable, and that was no masks in another building, so I can only imagine what it's going to be like on the side of school when there is a match and you have to wear a mask.
But the kids didn't have to wear it.
No.
But parents do.
Yep, and that was horrible.
Nope.
So, I don't know.
Okay, so we're waiting for.
So we had made a motion to write a letter to the State Board.
It wasn't, it wasn't a letter.
Resolution.
Was it a written, oh, okay, I thought, I thought Ms. Pataglia had stated it as a letter.
My recollection is that there was a motion to make a resolution, but there was no motion that set forth the content of the resolution.
Andy, while we're waiting for it to be shown on the screen, could you read it back to us?
Well, I, I can't, it's on the screen, I didn't write it down, I can't stop, it's a transcript.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's what she's trying to get Bob to do.
Yeah, I'm getting Bob to come out here. Do you know how to stop this?
Maybe, maybe it'd be quicker to withdraw the second, withdraw, withdraw the motion and make a new one.
Write it up.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, we can approve, we, we can take a vote on whether we want to write a resolution, and then we can basically do another motion to, for the content of the resolution.
You can do that.
Okay, so we have a, a motion on the floor to write a resolution. Any other comments?
But was your original motion to write a letter, and then Mr. Omealy used the word resolution?
It was a resolution, yes.
It was resolution?
Mom, whatever, something.
Well, we have to have it right, though. It's, a letter is not the same as a resolution.
Okay.
And that's the problem, so.
Almost there.
Okay, that's fine.
So do I need to make a motion then, for?
It's, let's.
Mr. Omealy, can we just withdraw that motion and make a new motion?
Ms. Pataglia can withdraw her motion, and a board member can make a new motion.
Okay, so this is going to be a new one then, withdrawing the other? Okay, so this is going to be a new one then? We're withdrawing the other one?
I'm going to withdraw my motion to send a letter as a board to the state board of education.
All right, so she has withdrawn that, and now I need a motion to, for a resolution.
So, I'm going to make a motion to have a res, to send another document to the board of that.
I think, Ms. Pataglia, if I may, I believe what I hear a majority of the board saying is that it is looking to adopt a resolution expressing the board's consensus that the state board either rescind the regulation on masks that's contained in COMAR 13A.01.07, or modify that regulation so as to give local boards the autonomy or authority to implement their own policies on the wearing of masks. That's what I think I hear most of you saying.
I would like to make that exact motion.
Yes.
Keep it simple.
Was that captured?
Yeah.
Did you get it, Andy? Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Pataglia. I need a second.
No, I made the motion that Mr. Omealy just laid out the verbiage of it.
I'll second it.
But nobody had seconded hers.
All right, nobody seconded hers. Okay, any other comments?
So, we need a second on her motion.
I said I'll second it.
You did, okay.
She did, yes. All right, any other comments, questions?
I still encourage everyone to.
Yes, you have to turn that on.
I still encourage everyone to, that still doesn't mean you can't write your own letter or email and try to do it, but I think that this ought to happen and ought to go out tomorrow.
As long as you indicate that you are speaking on behalf of yourself, rather than on behalf of the board.
All right, I call for the vote. All those.
Wait a minute.
Oops.
No, you were talking about the public.
You were talking to the community, right? Or were you talking to us as board members?
I think, I want to write a letter.
Okay, so you want to write one yourself, but the board is sending.
I encourage, and everybody out there too. I mean, for or against, the state board has to hear our opinions.
Ms. Tree?
So, is the motion that we are going to make a resolution, or that we are adopting the following?
We're adopting a resolution with the content to either rescind the regulation or modify the regulation to provide local authority over that particular issue.
Okay, so, isn't there a particular format that resolutions need to take, such as like, whereas this, whereas this, therefore?
Ideally, we would have a written resolution, and that's why I asked whether or not the board would prefer to discuss this now, write something up and have it for an action item in December. And I don't believe that's the consensus of the majority of the board. And so, you can certainly do a resolution right here on the floor.
We just did.
We just, we just, we just did that. Now, I was going to call for the vote.
Are we going to take 10 minutes to actually, like, write it out?
If you want to recess and do that, yeah, you can do that.
All right.
Or the other choice again, and again, I know it sounds like most of you are willing to go ahead with the resolution, so the other thought would be, if you all are interested in writing individual letters, that can be done. By the time we would get together in December, the state board would have met, and hopefully would have discussed the mask regulation. Plus, we'll already be through the session that Mrs. Herbert is going to be involved in on Tuesday. So, it would just give us a little more time. And again, I hear what people are saying. I mean, I know that there are times too, that I, you know, again, we're getting people vaccinated. I hear the concern now with wanting the masks dropped, so, you know, I know it's real, and I know there are times when, again, we have to take mask breaks. I mean, we should probably build some into our meetings ourselves. But again, you know, we may not be.
Burn up over here.
For the resolution right now, so I would just say, okay, go with the letters and give us some time, and then we can come back in December. And that's just my view.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Do you want me to type it up and give it to each of you? Do you have it in front of you, or?
Whereas.
I would prefer if she could type up very similar to what Mr. Omealy said, and then maybe a little bit later in the meeting, we can go through and edit it and approve it.
Is that okay? All right, we'll hold this vote?
I don't think we need to hold the vote, right? We can.
Well, we need to know specifically what we're voting on, so let's just wait until they write it.
Yep. All right, so.
Dr. Ong, do you have a question?
Yes.
Or would we like to table the vote to move it further down into the meeting after we have the draft resolution?
As we're holding it, yeah.
Written out, because I would like to see it, I guess, in the official format with like, the whereas and therefore.
All right, Kenny, what was your comment?
Well, I have some other questions if we're.
Well, all right, while they're doing that, go ahead.
And Dr. Lockard, I'm not sure. As I've spoke at other meetings, there are 12 reasons not to wear a mask, and I know we're being, I think, as creative as all, and I appreciate Dr. Dorsey. Rhonda and I flew last week. I think I had a mask on for eight hours, and so I drank a couple of things of water just so I could take it off. But what's happening with school pictures? We're not going to have yearbooks that everybody's wearing a mask, are we? And, and I keep hearing, and I understand, I know you guys are always ahead of me, but I just keep hearing from parents is, "Oh, you can't take your mask off." Well, I came in and I wanted to video something for 30 seconds, and I got reported because I pulled my mask down. And A, I would hope we're not reporting. I heard that last year with sports, a coach pulled his mask down to talk to kids, so somebody took pictures and sent it to everybody. He was without a mask, well, for about 30 seconds. So. So, could somebody just cover that a little bit? Like I say, I keep getting asked about it, and I say, "I think we're using common sense. We're doing the best we can with these exceptions, and hopefully, we're doing okay."
I think we are trying to apply common sense, Mr. Kyler, to as many situations as we can. Ms. McCabe can elaborate a little bit more on that.
So, for school pictures, no, we are not having students wear masks. They'll be taking their masks off for those pictures. And, you know, we're trying for other pictures that make their way into the yearbook. Many of them, the kids won't be wearing masks. It just depends on if they are pictures taken of activities just kind of going on. Students may have masks on for that, but, you know, if they're pictures with the intent of actually seeing the student and seeing the student's face, the mask will not be on.
And not us, I'm sure. One of the things you saw over the internet, some school put out a thing a couple Fridays ago, "This is Halloween. You can wear a costume into school, but we don't want any of the kids wearing masks or anything that covers part of their face because it kills the education." Well, I'm thinking, somebody need to think about that one. And I know none of us did that.
All right, any other?
And, Mr. Kyler, did we want to have another quick discussion about the exceptions that are in the regulation? Whereas, you know, we kind of talked at the last meeting about, you know, when we changed the doctor's note, apparently, that, you know, parents needed to send in to get an exemption for their kids, and we were basically trying to, we were basically making a decision of whether we were going to accept the doctor's note or not, and we were also talking about trying to rehabilitate the kids into wearing a face shield if they couldn't wear a mask. I say, if we have the authority to have these exceptions, if a doctor's note is provided, then the child should have the exception. We shouldn't be changing the doctor's note. We shouldn't be interpreting whether it's a legitimate doctor's note or not.
That's correct. So, if we, if the parent brings in the mask exemption signed by a doctor, we're accepting that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I don't think that's quite what we were saying was happening at the last meeting.
Correct, but because of the discussion at the last meeting, we made sure that was the case.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard.
Okay, all right. Ed's over there, working very hard. And so, do you want to table this, or do you want to just, we can just continue on?
Right, we can table it.
All right.
We have a document.
Okay, we will table this. Do we have a document? And, yes.
Do we need to make a motion to table this?
We probably do.
Yeah, okay. All right, Ms. Pataglia?
So, I make a motion that we table the resolution till later in the meeting, when the document is ready for us to review.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Ms. Vigney, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we will go on to. Okay, Ms. Dorsey opposed. Okay, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and now I need Mr. Kyler to talk about Veterans Day.
You want me to?
Yes, you're doing the.
Veterans Day.
Yes.
Tomorrow, November 11th, will be commemorating Veterans Day, a time for us to honor the men and women who have served in the United States military. Many of our schools will be observing the day with special programs, guest speakers, displays, and related projects. A list highlighting some of these activities is posted on our website. A special thanks goes to our community members and employees who have proudly served our country, and thank you, veterans.
And thank you, Mr. Kyler. You're a veteran. And could people out in the audience stand if you are a veteran? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Dorsey?
American Education Week. During the week of November 15th through 19th, we will celebrate American Education Week. This week gives us an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor those who are making a difference in ensuring that every student receives a quality education. We are very grateful to our dedicated teachers and support staff for all that they do for our students. And as always, we appreciate the continued support of our parents and the community as we work together on behalf of our schools and the success of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia?
November 8th through 12th is School Psychology Awareness Week. This special week highlights the important work our school psychologists and other educators do to help all students thrive. This year's theme, "Let's Get in Gear," provides a challenge to grow both personally and professionally, engage in best practices, and advocate for children's access to mental health and learning supports. Thank you to our school psychologists for their commitment to providing support for our students and their families.
All right, now we'll go on to a board member activities. Dr. Dorsey?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Herbert. Okay, I participated in or attended the following activities. First of all, on October 22nd, the Curriculum Council had a meeting, and it was held at the outdoor school. So, I certainly thank Mrs. Angie McCoslin for structuring the meeting for us. I also thank Mrs. Gina Felter for providing an overview of outdoor school and talking about our partnership with Hoshawa, and to the staff and our student tour guides. We also thank Mr. Brian Schumaker, our STEM coordinator, for connecting how students are involved in science activities in the other grades before and after attending outdoor school. It was a beautiful fall day, and members of the council had the opportunity to tour the classrooms. I was in a group that toured the Martin Cabin homestead, and as many times as I've gone to outdoor school, I've never gone down to that cabin. So, that was a special treat for me. And when we got to the cabin, the teacher was there interacting with students who were there from Northwest Middle. And during the questioning, you could tell that the students were actually getting how life was back in this pre-Civil War homestead. So, we certainly can all be proud of our outdoor school with its emphasis on environmental issues, and they use a four-step process for taking action. And I need to also thank Ms. Felter for one additional thing. She actually drove the bus to and from Northwest Middle for the students to be able to attend outdoor school. So, we certainly thank her for that, and we look forward to the time when outdoor school is open full-time for the students to participate in the full experience. On the 27th of October, I attended the MABE Equity Committee meeting, and at that time, we reviewed and discussed the input and comments that we received from the Board Service Academy, and we also looked at the draft scenarios that we are going to have included in the Equity Workbook. On November 2nd, I had the opportunity to attend the partnership reception that was held at the links at Shaladon Golf Course, and it was to thank some of our partners for supporting CCPS. So, we certainly thank you, Dr. Lockard, and Mr. Anderson, and all the staff and those partners who were in attendance at that reception. On the 3rd of November, I participated in the Career and Tech Center mock job interviews, and it was certainly a pleasure spending the morning interacting with students in mock interviews. And I have to say, the students were very well-prepared, and they were able to share their short-term and long-term goals, and to discuss some elements of their future careers. So, many thanks to staff, and it's really all staff, for preparing the students, because as they sit before you in an interview, it's not just the one who has worked with the student, you know, the most recent, but it's really, you know, just a whole culmination of all of the education that we provided for the students. So, we just thank everyone for preparing the students, and a special thanks to Ms. Claire Linfield for coordinating the activities of the day. And finally, on the 6th of November, I attended the virtual MABE Board of Directors Retreat, and at that retreat, we reviewed our roles and responsibilities of the MABE Board, of board members, committees, and staff. And we also approved our areas of focus that we have in our work plan for the upcoming year. And we finally discussed how trust can be used as a tool to help us achieve our focus areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Ms. Pataglia?
So, within the past month, I have continued my, I've been continuing my college classes. I finished up Theories of Personality. I began my Women's Studies and the History of Women's Rights class, and I absolutely love it, and coming to find out that I am a feminist. So, look out, men, because I'm on the prowl, and I'll bite your head off. I don't know. But it's nice to learn a lot about different parts of history that I really didn't learn about, you know, when I was younger, so I'm excited for that part. And in January, I will begin Social Psychology. So, we've seen our wonderful homecomings, and I was very excited for all our football games to happen, our soccer games, field hockey, cheerleading competitions. I was very happy that my daughter asked a graduate from last year from Fashion and Textiles to make her homecoming gown, and it was absolutely beautiful. We just had a curriculum committee meeting, Ms. Vigney and I, and it went very well. And, you know, kind of trying to do things as normal as possible, trick-or-treating. Of course, I did it in the Sunshine State, but that's okay. It was wonderful. And, you know, tomorrow we have Veterans Day, so make sure you do honor our vets and thank them for all their sacrifices that we have in all our rights. We have Thanksgiving coming up, so make sure to say what you're thankful for. Try to enjoy some family time. And please, 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 on Black Friday, if you're going to go shopping, please support our local small businesses. They are struggling right now. They've been struggling this entire time, so please support them in any way possible, whether it's a gift card, whether it's a small item that you're purchasing, anything can help them out.
Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Along with Dr. Dorsey, I was at the partnership reception at Shaladon, and Dr. Lockard did a great talk, and Mr. Anderson gave awards and was kind of the emcee and did a great job. Other staff was all there. And the only thing I want to mention to that is, Shaladon is one of the partners, and you guys are now working it out where you use the partners for the event, which I think is really neat, because it's hard to realize how much these partners do with the schools. It's not just a name. They really do a lot. And then last. And then last night, I was at the, the Arts Center for Carroll County Parks and Rec Hall of Fame and Volunteer Awards. All five commissioners were there, so I got to spend the evening chatting with them. And, and that's a great event, and it's, the place was full of volunteers. And I don't know if technically they're considered a partner, but with the old joint-use agreement, now the use of facilities and the self-help programs, and the commissioners made the comment several times last night, if Carroll County had to pay for all the self-help projects, all the capital projects and field improvements that happened, and all the volunteers at work, essentially, they couldn't do it, and we wouldn't have those programs. So I, I just think that was a great evening also. Thank you.
Ms. Sevigny?
Thanks. Well, it's been a busy month, as always, but just a couple of quick things that I wanted to make note of. The first was the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting that Tyra and others have already mentioned this evening. But there were some very exciting discussions at that meeting, especially regarding the World Languages programs and the pilots that we're looking to build. So there, there's going to be, you know, more to come on that. But I think that Ms. Pataglia and I were both very excited to hear about that. And as well as, you know, talking about topics of that, the reconsideration committee, RTI plans, further discussions on the health curriculum. It was just really, really great discussions. And I want to remind the public that those meetings are open to the public, and that we do take public comment at the beginning of those meetings. We haven't had anyone take us up on that yet. So that was our second meeting, and, and we've had some people in the audience, but no one got up to participate at the beginning. And I just want to let parents know, community know, that, that we are open to taking several speakers at the beginning of that group. So I just wanted to make that, that PSA right there. The, another thing was, I did attend a Naviance webinar earlier in the month, which is for parents to kind of understand the tools that are there, the, the kind of things that they're using in their advisory groups in the high school. And I would just want to say, this is an outstanding tool. Couldn't have been more excited about the possibilities and the information and connections that that tool provides. So I just want to thank the school system for making that available, that, that really incredible tool available to our students and our parents. And the last one is, I attended the Westminster College and Career Pathways Night last week. And Westminster High School, shout out to Mr. Boger, that was a, that was an incredible event. Really great to just see all the opportunities, all the programs at Westminster High School, as well as Career and Tech, and some financial aid folks there to talk about FAFSA's. And, and it was just a really great evening. And I think I'm actually seeing the face of someone that I talked to that evening. So, thank you all for, at the Academy of Finance, right? My son was very interested after talking to you, so, so thank you very much for that. So those are, those are the big things for this month.
Delonte, did you figure anything out?
She said she didn't have anything. I said, I bet you do. I was right.
So on October 22nd, I was able to attend the Curriculum Council meeting at outdoor school. So for those who don't know, I moved to this county in 7th grade. So I never got the privilege of attending outdoor school, and I can say that I was very jealous. But it's truly a wonderful experience for all the students that stays with them throughout middle school and high school. And a prime example of this is that my peers still fondly, like, mention those experiences and what they learned in my AP Environmental Science class right now. So it's truly a wonderful experience that our sixth graders get to have. Yesterday, I was able to attend an East Middle School SGA meeting. And earlier in October, I attended the CCSA Executive Board Meeting. But I also want to use this time to sort of talk about mental health, especially with the end of the first quarter. So students are currently being held to the same standards academically that they were two years ago, after a year where those standards were near nonexistent, almost. Couple that with all of the anxieties that students have had to endure with the current polarized climate and the pandemic, I can attest to the fact that students feel very drained right now. And we, as students, can also feel and see that the teachers are drained, too. So I hope that later on in today's meeting, that we can have robust discussions, and hopefully, action on how to address teacher and student mental health and wellness.
Thank you. Dr. Lockard, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Couple things I want to speak to tonight. First, the, at the Career Tech Center, the Building, Congress, and Exchange Foundation awards $1,000 scholarships each year to four promising high school students who are pursuing careers, training, or degrees in the construction and design fields. Students from our Career Tech Center brought home all four of the scholarships that were presented this year. That's quite an accomplishment. So we say congratulations to John Alcorn, Welding, Winters Mill; Spencer Armitage, Electrical Construction, Winters Mill; Justin Faute, Masonry, Manchester Valley; and Emma Santuro, Drafting, from Century. So I encourage folks to go to the News and Notices section of our website, and there's a video highlighting these outstanding students and their work. So congratulations. Also want to say congratulations to Samaya Rahaman. She's a junior at Westminster High School. She's been appointed to represent Carroll County as a member of the Maryland Youth Advisory Council. The Maryland Youth Advisory Council ensures that Maryland youth are given the opportunity to provide feedback and recommendations regarding public policies and programs that affect their future, and to take a leadership role in creating meaningful change. So congratulations, Samaya. As echoed before, the evening before Veterans Day, I want to express my gratitude to all of our veterans, as well as their families, for their service and sacrifice for our country. I also want to thank our schools for finding creative and meaningful ways to recognize our veterans. As mentioned, I think earlier, somebody mentioned, there's a, there's a highlight list of many of these activities, and that's also posted on our website. And we'll be sharing photos on our social media platforms throughout those events. As it relates to some of the comments we heard earlier, particularly from Ms. McCullough for teachers and the workload and the stress, we recognize all of the associated challenges with transitioning back to school for, for both our staff and our students, as Ms. Tree just mentioned. We're so appreciative of all our staff does and have been doing, and recognize, and recognize that even in a normal year, there is, there is that burnout and stress level that comes with the work that they do. And certainly, you know, this year, with the challenges we continue to face. So we are being very conscientious, and you heard Ms. McCullough mention that, about workload and the plates that people have. So there's many, many, many things between last year and this year that, for obvious reasons, we've either pushed out several years, we never started, or, or we've just shelved, because the timing is not right. You know, in school systems, we're always looking to improve. We're always trying for that continual improvement. But we also recognize we have to, we have to get, just being back in school right, so that people can, can be available for, for learning. And so most everything we're doing this year are really just some continuation of things that had either already been started, or were in response to feedback that we've heard over the last several years about how we can, how we can make things more efficient or better for teachers and staff. It's things they've been asking for. We do routinely meet, I think tomorrow is another meeting, with our Teachers Advisory Committee. And we also work to collaborate and communicate with all of our associations. Well, just about everything happening in our school system, we want their input, their feedback, their perspective. And again, most of those things are designed to reduce workloads, to create greater efficiencies, and/or comply to, unfortunately, we, we have to comply with mandatory requirements. However, there are a few things this year that we have been able to do. We are still constantly working to try to make sure we're monitoring that workload and that stress. I'm speaking to our teachers right now. We've, as I mentioned earlier, we've paused, pushed, or just not even started many new initiatives. And, you know, I had a conversation, I talk to Ms. McCullough quite a bit. Our, our teachers are go-getters, and they, they want to do all the things that they, that they want to do. I don't want to stop them, but I also don't want to do things systemically that add so much to somebody's plate that it's hard for them to do the work that they need to do. So we're being very careful about that. We've paused our professional development activities that pull teachers out of the classroom during the school day, unless it's absolutely required for some sort of certification or licensure requirement. You've heard the issues we've had with substitute teachers and being able to have enough substitutes. So we don't want to create more of a, an issue for ourselves by pulling people out. And again, it's hard for us not to, not to want to continually improve and work on these things. But we recognize, in the climate right now, it's important that we don't do that. We've provided all of our schools an allotment for two additional permanent substitutes. That's on top of the additional positions we had already provided for permanent substitutes. And don't forget about the 50 teaching positions that we embedded in our budget last year, carried over to this year to help reduce class sizes and to help with some of that workload. We are once again, we did this last year, we're doing it again. We have, we're setting up our central office substitute pool so that when there are shortages, we have additional staff here. And I applaud the folks here, because they will stop what they're doing. And there's a lot on their plates, too, to try to go out and support a school, a classroom, a cafeteria, whatever it might be. So that lessens the load for folks in our schools. And so we're trying to help with those shortages. And I know Mr. Diaz in the Human Resources Department is, you're seeing advertisements for all sorts of job fairs and opportunities we're really promoting to get substitutes, IAs, whoever it might be that we need in the system, opportunity. You've heard Ms. McCabe talk about the Quarantine Success Coach position that we added. I know it's tough to fill all those, but we did that in an effort to try to take some things off of our teachers' plates. I know we have a lot of administrators who are also stepping in and supporting that work. And we've also, you know, we pushed back just a little bit, the start of our, our second semester extended learning opportunity, to give ourselves a little bit of a breather after the return from the, the winter break. So I know, if I could wave a magic wand and completely reduce everybody's workload, we'd do that tomorrow. There are things that, as a school system, we, we have to do. But we are going to continue to look at ideas like these, continue to monitor and make those adjustments where we can. So I just wanted to mention that. I, I know, you know, I hear from some people, like, you don't need to say thank you anymore to me. You just need to help me find ways to, to navigate this. So please know that we're trying to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms.? Ms. Sevigny?
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. Dr. Lockard, I just had a couple of questions and comments based on everything that you just said. And thank you for all of those comments. Very comprehensive about what's going on right now. The whole new, no new initiatives item. I know that, you know, we had started the Performance Academies before the pandemic. And I know that they were a very promising initiative to try to help us with academic achievement. And one, one of the things I want to say is, you know, the, the reason we're here is because of academic achievement, right? We're trying to maximize academic achievement. And I feel like there's so many things going on right now that we, we're kind of losing sight of some of that.
Right, so like I said, a lot of the things that we had in motion, we continued, we, we adjusted that. So we're not pulling those folks out, you know, four times a year, all day long, because that just exacerbates the substitute problem.
Yeah, so, so Ms. Sevigny, it was well-received, the Performance Academies. And people often talk about it, or they're asking us, when are we going to start those back up? And so for this year, our plans are to take the work that we typically had done in group effort, where you, you, Ms. Herbert, others attended, Dr. Dorsey. And we've actually started working with our equity liaisons to provide some of that data that they became familiar with, and to give it to the actual equity liaisons to help facilitate school leaders, that conversation taking place at the school building. We do hope to, once again, bring us together in, in the future so that we can go ahead and continue that work, because we have lots of plans, and we have a three- to five-year plan on implementation. But right now, one of our biggest concerns is making sure that, you know, our schools are, are able to keep, you know, keep going. And, and a lot of our folks, as Dr. Lockard said, will be covering classrooms.
And Mr. Anderson, what about the, I know at the, at the CNI Committee meeting last week, we talked about the RTI pilots that are, that are going on. Is that something that's going to get postponed because of the no new initiatives?
Yeah, so, so what we've decided is to hold off on the actual consultation team, professional or growth capacity opportunity. What we are going to do and continue to do is to identify the evidence-based interventions that can be availed to schools come spring. And working with the Elementary Director, Mr. Wernick, we're looking at four ELA, as well as four math, where we can begin to go ahead and begin to deem some sort of efficacy with those interventions. Where, over a nine-week period, as Dr. Lockard said, we're looking to start our spring ELO, February the 1st. That was a recommendation of our school directors, saying, you know what, let's give them a little bit more time. Also, our Transportation Department's been outstanding. That gives them some time as well to have a little bit of reprieve there before we start up again. We'll go nine weeks and then, and at the end of, of March. We're very excited about that. Mr. Shockey and I also just visited a, a school where they're looking at their intervention block in a, in a unique way, which we're going to be learning from, too. So we are going with the work, it's just the consultative opportunity of the, the team discourse opportunity is going to be placed on the back burner for a little while, until we can get our schools going.
Yeah, we just, we've experienced the issues where we're pulling people out of schools during the day and can't fill that. That just creates a bigger problem for, you know, an entire school. And so we're, we're trying to keep things that we've already got in the pipeline in, in focus. And, and, you know, we're not going to abandon that.
Right.
But we're just being careful about how we do that at this point in time.
Right, no, I understand. And along those lines, I know last year, when we were really struggling to get people in the buildings, you know, we, we did reach out to the community for, you know, substitute, anybody who has the ability to be a substitute teacher. And I know that we had a lot of people heed that call. Is that, is that a call that we need to make again?
We're, we're making it. Mr. Diaz, not only is he having, you know, job fair opportunities, but we're providing support to all our local schools to communicate with their communities. A lot of times, you'll find folks who are like, oh, my, my home school, where my child goes to school, needs a substitute? I could do that, it's on my schedule, it's on my kid's schedule. So we're also providing those, those resources as well to schools. So we are trying to hit that at every corner. We are not alone in the, the labor shortage that, that seems to be an issue for every school system right now.
So Dr. Lockard, we could have them drive a school bus with their children.
Substitute.
Substitute, take their children home, and, and continue to drive the school bus.
Yep.
So I'm still trying to help out the school bus drivers, too, because we need, we need subs, we need IAs, we need coaches, and we need bus drivers. So just wanted to hit it all.
You got it.
There you go.
Unfortunately, it's everywhere. You know, it's, it's every school system across this nation, it's every small business, it's everywhere, you know? And everyone's feeling the hard times. And, you know, the emails we have been getting from the teachers, like, you know, I'm, I feel for them. I completely get it, you know? I mean, and parents understand it, too. I mean, those that have been working, everyone that has been working this whole entire time, we get it. We know it's been tough.
Absolutely. Do you have anything else, Ms. Sevigny?
Oh, no, I just wanted to make one final comment about Dr. Lockard's comments with it. So the, the 50 staff positions that, that we had put up two years ago to help in the pandemic, and we carried those over this year because we knew of all the recovery learning. But those are not permanent positions, right?
Correct, correct. But we recognize the need, especially heading into this year, that extra hands would provide, yes.
All right, Mr. Kyler?
And, and I just want to compliment Carroll County Public School System, everybody in this room, Dr. Lockard. I loved your comments. I see other school systems, and their first answer is to take away student time in the building. And, and that's the last thing I want to see us do at this point. I'm so happy you guys are finding things to slide back to, to help teachers get the more valuable time they need without sacrificing students' time face-to-face with them. So thank you all.
I think Mr. Weaver has a...
Yes. Mr. Weaver, good evening, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm late.
No, I'm glad you're here.
But I was at Judge Kara Lewis's investiture.
Oh.
And...
North Carroll graduate?
A North Carroll graduate.
Where did they do it, Commissioner Weaver?
At North Carroll High School. She graduated from there, as well as Chief Judge Getty, who actually, Kyler, he, Mr. Kyler, he alluded to you, is a North Carroll graduate there also. But one of the positive things came out of that, she wanted it at that school. Her public school education meant that much to her. And she, if you know her, she's been with the State's Attorney's Office. She is one dynamic young lady, is a 30-something young mother. She is now on the bench here at District Court. And she did give the school a lot of credit for where she is today. So that was nice to hear. And the whole judiciary heard what she was saying. So that was nice to hear, and the whole judiciary heard what she was saying about the public school system. So to her teachers and the people that helped her, I think they deserve a lot of credit, even though I think they were overworked then, they probably still are, but they did a great job.
Thank you. All right, before we move on, we have in our hands now the resolution, and I will read this.
Just one correction.
Okay.
It's, this is one second, one, two, three. Second paragraph at the end, it should say, "In schools subject to certain expectations..."
Yeah, that's what it says. It should say, "exceptions."
Exceptions, okay, I'm sorry. Exceptions there.
Right.
Just so you have the right verbiage.
And in the fourth paragraph, the word "turn" should be "turns."
With an S.
With an S.
All right. Would you like me to read this, Dr. Lockard?
Sure.
Okay. Whereas Governor Hogan previously stated that this decision to require the wearing of face coverings in schools should be a local Board of Education decision. And whereas on August 26, 2021, the Maryland State Board of Education...
Promulgated.
Thank you. Emergency regulation, I didn't want to mess it up, codified at COMAR 13A dot 01 dot 07 ET SEQ, mandating the wearing of face coverings in schools, subject to certain exceptions. And whereas Maryland has a high number of vaccinations against COVID-19, and vaccinations are now available for students ages five and older. And whereas many parents in Carroll County, in Carroll County community continue to express serious reservations regarding the mandatory wearing of face coverings in public schools, especially as the weather turns colder and opportunities for outdoor mask breaks become less available. Now, therefore, the Board of Education of Carroll County hereby resolves that it strongly urges the Maryland State Board of Education to rescind the emergency regulation set forth at COMAR 13A dot 01 dot 07 ET SEQ regarding mandatory face coverings in schools, and that it returns to the local Boards of Education the full authority to regulate on a local basis the wearing of face coverings as the individual local Boards of Education deem appropriate for their school communities, resolved in public session this 10th day of November 2021. Comments, questions, concerns? All right, I call for the vote.
Do we need to put the motion back on the table? I would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution as Ms. Herbert just read.
Okay. And I will second. And second, all right. Any other comments?
Were there any other where-ases that we wanted on here, or do we think this covers it?
Short and sweet, to the point.
Keep it simple.
Yes. All right, no other comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And we have Dr. Dorsey and Ms. Tree. Okay, it still passes, thank you.
So this will be done and has to be signed by Mrs. Herbert and then go out, so that can happen hopefully tomorrow?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now we will move on to the school's construction report. Dr. Lockard, I see he's right up in the front row there, and have we been moving any dirt yet?
Right, so a couple of highlights, and Jim may talk about these. The Career Tech Center continues to move along in all components. The construction team is beginning to coordinate transitions from Phase One to Phase Two with East Middle. There's more on the agenda a little bit later regarding some additional good news as it relates to state funding. And we did receive the grading permit from the county after board documents were loaded, and we're hoping to schedule a groundbreaking ceremony here pretty soon with the board, the commissioners, and the city council as well.
Bring all the shovel, come on. I'm ready, I have been waiting for this for ages. I can't wait.
Looking forward to it.
Yes.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Weaver, did you go on the tour of the Career and Tech Center last month?
No, I did not yet. I'll get into there, it gets built here very shortly.
Gotcha.
You're always invited.
All right, thank you.
I'll take you up on it.
All right, and Dr. Lockard, now we'll move on to the COVID-19 physical impact report.
Okay, so Mr. Hartlove has revised the format of the report to note the specific changes from the previous month. We had done that last year, we made sure that that's included, and that should help clarify updates. As you can see, we've now closed out final costs for the summary 2021 recovery program and are beginning to track incurred costs for the current school year. And Mr. Hartlove is available if anybody has any questions.
Any, oh, Ms. Sevigny.
Mr. Hartlove, could I ask a couple of quick questions? And thanks for putting this side-by-side comparison together, I think that's very helpful. For the summer learning recovery, so it was an increase of a little over 200,000 in the month, so are we expecting additional costs to come in for that?
Not at this point. I believe we're pretty much closed out of the summer. That was probably just some staggering, some time cards coming in, some, maybe some supplies and materials that we procured that we, the payment, the actual invoice we were invoiced later for. So that should be closed out at this point.
Okay. And I see on here for Schoology PD, there's 332,950. That seems like a big number.
Yeah, we actually budgeted, I think, a half a million out of the federal dollars for that, and that ramped up over the summer. I think if you have any specifics, I guess, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, Mr. Hartlove's correct. The original budget was to be about $500,000. It was an opportunity for our high school teachers to take part in a learning experience that was virtual, that was online, to build their capacity in order to be able to effectively implement Schoology as we returned to school this year. As you remember, we had 25 teachers last spring field test it or field study it, gave us feedback, we worked out the kinks, and then we went ahead and put the training together for the summer. Teachers were able to take part in that over the summer and paid for it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
And just one last, the connectivity of 82,000, what is that?
I believe that's the, for students who don't have connectivity in their home, I believe that's, we're continuing to support those students.
Okay, the additional support for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that number will be ongoing, I would imagine.
I believe so, yes. I believe that that's just the, kind of, the beginning of the school year.
Okay, that's a monthly amount that we would expect?
I believe so, yeah. You know, because we're summarizing all of these expenditures into one page, there could be multiple things there, there could be some one-time items that, you know, if anything, the ongoing monthly amount should be much smaller than this, because I think there's some one-time things in there as well.
Okay, so some catch-up and some one-time in there.
Yeah, I was just about to say, I don't think that's a monthly amount for that connectivity. I think that's a setup and a device piece, yeah.
Right, because that would be a big number ongoing if that were a monthly level, okay.
I was going to say, I was looking at the instrumental mass, and it's 39,000, I believe, and then when you had said, you know, that's kind of like just over time, and I was like, yeah, 39,000 for mass, talk about inflation, good lord.
Right, right. And that was an addition, yeah, I guess that was an additional 3,000 for the month, right?
Mr. Weaver, are we doing anything for the internet in areas in Carroll County that are not up and running, or where are we with that in areas that it's very hard? Are we trying to still continue to improve the internet?
Oh, yes. Thank you. The internet has always been a problem, especially, we saw it last year due to COVID. We have allocated, we've had money from the federal government coming in, and it's two payments on that. And if I have it right, it's about 17 million for fiber to get out to the areas in the county that don't have it at the present time. And I, we still have other monies that we haven't dedicated yet, but I'm looking at, we're looking at the majority of this money, and it's about 34 million, I think, total, will go for internet service or fiber to the last providers that can provide internet, whether they have to go overhead, underground, wherever they can get it to get to those people who do not have it. We have areas of the county identified at the present time. We also have several grants we have for roads that normally didn't, wouldn't qualify for some type of internet service. So within the next year, I think you're going to see a marked improvement in our internet service.
This definitely raised its ugly head during COVID for our students here in the county. So, okay, well, thank you for that information. Ms. Pataglia.
How do families apply for the grant? Because we have heard from some that said, like, you know, Comcast doesn't come to my driveway, it's right at the end of the road, but my driveway's like a half a mile back off the road. How do families apply for the grant? Because I think that's something that's really important that families need to know about in Carroll County.
Well, Comcast can be one of the initiators of that, or you can simply call the IT Office, Mark Ripper, to see if you can get some additional assistance on that. And some of the grants are state grants that we're applying for, for identified roads in areas. And we can only do so many at a time, but we can take a whole road area and hopefully put fiber to it.
Okay, so I think it's really important for families to know that, you know, if they call Comcast, Comcast tells them no, that actually, yes, there is things that can be done.
There are some things out there, if they qualify, there's some qualifications for it, and they are, you know, it depends here, again, the service area and where they are in the area, but there are grants to help that, at least half the funding for this. And presently, I think Comcast will let people do their own trenching to the area now, that reduces the cost to many individuals. So we have allocated quite a few million dollars going to this internet service, and it's due to COVID, it's due to what we saw in the school system. And I hate to say it, Tom Hill, who lives up your way, always alluded, you know, here I am, I can't get internet. Well, he's finally going to get it, even though he retired.
Good.
So, yeah, we are working on that.
Thank you so much. And I don't see any other questions from Mr. Hartlove, thank you. And now we will move on to staffing analysis and class size report. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, I'm going to ask Ms. McCabe to come up and walk board members through. This is an annual report we provide to the board each year this time, and she's going to provide some overview of the class size component. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Just a quick, I'll just go over the highlights here. Our class size has been steady over the past four years, at about 22, 23 students per class. At the elementary level, this year, we're at 21.3 students as an average per class. At middle, we're at 22.5 as an average per class. And at high school, we're at 23.2 this year as an average class size. As far as class sizes over 30, which is, I know, always one of our biggest concerns, this year, elementary has no classes over 30. Middle school has 15% of their classes over 30, zero classes over 35. As far as high school goes, 13% are over 30. In the academic classes, zero are over 35. And in the non-academic classes, they have 23% that are over 30. So that's, those are the main highlights of the report. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have the magic number for September 30 of our enrollment? Do we have that? I know it was getting close.
Right.
We are getting close. What it's looking like is that we have about 300 students fewer this year as compared to last year.
Compared to last year.
No, compared to two years ago.
Yes, I'm sorry, compared to two years.
Right, that has to still be sort of run through all of their scrubbers, if you will.
So we haven't gotten the official number?
We haven't gotten the official, but that's our best estimate, and that's actually pretty good, because we were doing, if you remember, with Mr. Kane and enrollment projections and all that, we were looking at estimate of about half the students back. Well, we think we got more than that, and so we're about, right now, about 300 off from our pre-pandemic, our fall of 2019 numbers.
Okay, yeah, I'm remembering something between 700 and 800 down last year, so now we're only down 300. So we got, we did get more than half of them back.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
You're awesome.
Well, Ms. Sevigny.
So, Ms. McCabe, thanks for this report. I mean, just kind of seeing how everything fits together, right? Like, so this leads into the EFMP, which then leads into the CIP, right? So we're looking at the number of students and how that impacts staffing, but also capacity at the schools, right?
Correct.
So the freedom number of 599 student enrollment, I don't recall whether that's up or down from, do you recall?
I don't recall, I don't have that number with me tonight, but I can get it for you.
Okay, because that's going to impact, right, how we, potentially how we move forward with the Freedom Redistricting Committee.
Yeah.
So are there any other things that jumped out on this report that surprised you? Like, there were no anomalies or issues that need to be handled anywhere? This is pretty consistent with prior years?
Yeah, I was actually surprised that it was so consistent with what we've seen in prior years. I wasn't expecting that for this year, but it really fell into what we've seen in prior years.
Okay, that's the same reaction that I had as I was going through it, I compared it to two years ago, and basically saying, oh, this is not a whole lot of change.
Nope.
Okay.
I think Mr. Wernick has a, you haven't...
Oh, great, yeah, one up.
So Freedom Elementary School, as you shared, this year was 599. Last year, for 2020, they were at 545, but then in 2019, they were at 576. So they are up. As we look at the elementary enrollment overall, if you look at 2019, we were about 10,918 students. And then last year, we dropped to 10,480. But we are up again this year to 10,944. So at the elementary level, we've actually increased in enrollment over two years ago, whereas the middle school and the high schools have shrunk some.
Okay, so the 300 that were down is not from, not from elementary at all?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good to know.
So we're increasing, so we are about, you know, from two years ago, we're about 26 students. From last year, we're up 400, about 450 students.
Okay, okay, that's good news, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. And Dr. Lockard, now we can move on to the blueprint implementation update.
Okay, thank you, board members. This is the monthly blueprint implementation update that we had started last month and agreed we'd establish as a monthly report for the board. Last month, we shared the process and the framework we've adopted for implementation. We discussed a good starting point for this month's meeting would be to summarize the five big blueprint policy areas around which, you know, we have based our implementation committee. So as we move forward month by month, we intend to continue to bring updates to you on our actions toward implementation under the blueprint, and also to share, as we get them, blueprint funding details, and that'll be key to all sorts of things. So Mr. O'Neill, who's our resident blueprint coordinator, among other things, is going to provide an update this evening, and the other team, we have some of the other team leaders here with us this evening who are available for questions. John?
Thank you, Dr. Lockard, and good evening. And here are those other team leaders, they're all right here, and if you have very challenging questions or complaints, they will be happy to run up here and receive those questions or your complaints. Just a reminder, when we first reported a month ago, Dr. Lockard shared that he established an implementation committee designed around those five, those five policy areas, which go all the way back to the Kerwin Commission itself and are now found in the law. And so for tonight, what we want to do is just sort of give some summaries of what those, what the intention of those five policy areas is under the law. And so I'm not... those, what the intention of those five policy areas is under the law. And so I'm not going to read all of these bullets.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Promise I'm not going to do that.
10 minutes.
They're going to be on the screen and you can ask whatever questions you'd like. But I'm just going to sort of summarize each of these. And then we also wanted to take a minute and tell you that at this early stage, and it's very early and there's very little guidance yet coming from various state agencies or bodies, what some of our initial either questions or concerns are under each of these policies. And again, we hope that that gets clearer as we go. Sort of the, the major focus of the early childhood education policy area is to create all-day pre-K for certain eligible three and four-year-olds. And eligibility relies on socioeconomic status and where a family is at relative to the federal poverty level. That's what FPL stands for. And to do so, create, create all-day pre-K for three and four-year-olds in certain categories through a public-private partnership of public education, public school system slots, and private provider slots. And that starts at a 70, 30% split or share, and then graduates up over time to a 50, 50% share for all of those slots. A second major component of this policy area is early learning readiness. And two of the major things there are that there would be a statewide kindergarten readiness assessment eventually in place that's universal for all kids to take, not, not sort of like the current structure now where it's a sampling. And then also some funding for expansion of duty centers and head starts. And so, you know, as we look at this area right now, there's a whole lot of detail that Mr. Wernick, I'm sure, is stressing over. But some of the big takeaways that for us are sort of questions or, or concerns are, is there availability in the private sector here to meet that 50, 50 threshold or even the 30, 70 threshold to start? And is there space, both in the private world and in the school system, physical space, building space to accommodate the students that would be entering those programs? So that's what we're going to, what we're going to focus on just for tonight and kind of a thumbnail of, of the early childhood policy area.
Mr. O'Neill, before you move on, could we ask some questions about that slide? So, I mean, that's potentially, if we look at the, the enrollment numbers from the, the last report that we just looked at, we're talking about potentially around 1,800 kids, right, for, of four-year-olds, right? So we, we had 11,000 kids that are in elementary school in total. So that's about 1,800 per grade, right? So we're talking about potentially adding 1,800 four-year-olds and same amount for three-year-olds, depending on, like, because I was looking at this federal poverty level. So the, the federal poverty level right now is defined as 26,500? Is that right?
Well, let me tell you. 300%, so it's, it's a scale based on the number in a household. Three, at 300% for a one, one-parent house, that would be 38,640. For a three-person home, 65,860. And at the higher end of that scale, 600% for three, for three or more household, a combined income of 133,20. So that's the range of, the range of eventual slots to phase in over, over time.
Okay.
The state is required under the law, and maybe Steve wants to speak to this, to compile sort of an initial baseline report this fall of, of I assume eligibility for, of students, and then also the spots available, the slots available in the, in the public and private world. And then with the assumption that there probably, that there may not be enough slots in, among private providers, there is, the state can create a waiver process to, to deal with the fact that there's, there's not yet those, those available slots.
Correct. And it's not mandatory. Again, parents have the option. Kindergarten, you know, through, you know, grade 12 is mandatory. Pre-K, three- and four-year-old programs store, it will not be mandatory. So, you know, even though we look at a percentage and we look at, you know, the FPL, the federal, federal poverty level, it's not mandatory. So we're hoping that we would still be able to meet, you know, all the parents who choose to have their children attend between that, you know, public and private partnerships that we currently have.
Okay.
And so I'm going to ask this because, you know, it's been in the news lately regarding the infrastructure bill. And President Biden has said a couple of times, you know, he's trying to get rid of completely a poverty level. So what would happen in the event, let's say, there is no poverty level anymore? So what would happen in the event regarding these type of programs?
We would wait for the Maryland State Department of Education to give us guidance on what they would look at as, you know, students who would, would, you know, be enrolled.
Okay.
Dr. Lockard?
And I'll just make a comment that I think applies to all these slides. So with all of these things, there's varying years of implementation and phase in and ramp up. But in the, I think the early years of some of these things, as we begin to transition into these areas, that will give us some clues or some indication of what, what we can expect. As Steve was referring to, we're not going to have, we know we're not going to have 1,800 pre-K students. But as we begin, and they look at the different, the sliding scales of what we can expect, and then there's the piece with the private, or the private or non-public, how that's going to get coordinated, that will be a big part of our planning and consideration as we look at our facilities and how much space we have. But it's going to happen over time.
Right. And that's what I was trying to understand was what, what is going to be the take-up rate, right? I mean, I know that we certainly wouldn't expect all of the eligible kids to come in, but just trying to understand what the take-up rate was and what that would mean from a space perspective. Because there, there, even though we used to have space in our elementary schools, that's very quickly getting eaten up.
What's our pre-K numbers right now?
I do not have them offhand.
I want to say 300 is the last number that we saw.
That's, that's the number we have right now in our schools for pre-K is 300.
So the, the date in the law for the baseline report here is, is supposed to be December 1st. We are going to talk about timelines later because some of these timelines are starting to get rather iffy. But in theory, at least, the, you know, the baseline to say what, what, what is eligibility? How many physical slots exist? And what would this phase in look like that, that should occur this winter? And maybe now is a good time to talk about timelines. So, so, so one of the challenges is we, we have this law in effect. We have an overall governance board, which is coming up on the last slide, whose members are appointed. But, but the structure to support that board doesn't yet exist. And it's, we call it the AIB, or the Accountability and Implementation Board. And that's the body that ultimately we're going to be looking for, for very specific guidance on what's required, what the reporting requirements are, how do we move forward with implementation. And so that, that kind of is an overarching challenge with, with all of this right now.
Dr. Lockard?
And John, that board has not met yet, correct?
Correct. The members have been appointed by the governor, but there isn't a structure for them to meet yet. There's not funding to support them, to have an agency that surrounds them. There's, they're not having physical meetings yet.
And there's currently supposed to be some key information coming out of that committee in February, correct?
Correct. And again, this would be on the last slide, which I won't cover.
Sorry to jump ahead.
Okay. The, the, kind of the ultimate driver for most of this, if you, if you will, is that each local board of education would have a blueprint implementation plan, a comprehensive blueprint implementation plan, that we, you, we would have to submit to the state by the end of this fiscal year, the year we're sitting in. And that plan would be based on a state model that the AIB would first submit a format for, to the state, to the Maryland State Department of Ed. On February 15th, the State Department of Ed would then be able to take that state model comprehensive implementation plan from the AIB and get guidance out to the local school system so that we could turn in plans that you've approved by the end of the fiscal year. So with each passing day of the AIB not being in place and not having a staff and not being up and running, we're pressing against that, that timeline. Many of us heard Dr. Kerwin of the Kerwin Commission, who is a member of the AIB now speak last week. And one of the things he noted was, maybe these timelines will need to be adjusted by the General Assembly this year. And I suppose overall, that would be great because it would be better to do something well on a, on an acceptable timeline than not. But it'll do very little to clarify in the meantime, what exactly is, you know, is required and when, until that, until that clarity comes.
Commissioner Weaver.
Is there any indication on the funding of these? I'm looking through this packet. It's a little scary. From state and what expectations are from the local, for local funding on this?
So at the broadest possible level, yes. And so there continues to be, in the most recent fiscal note, for instance, that, that the Legislative Services Department produced, Carroll County government is still at zeros across the board in terms of you being required to, you know, to elevate beyond your, your funding trajectory already. In terms of how much state aid we, we might expect under the blueprint, we're still trying to pick that apart. The board's going to have a work session in December. We'll do our best to have some, some preliminary estimates. But until we see the governor's budget in, in January, it's going to be very hard to say with a ton of certainty, this, this is what the funding's going to be under the blueprint. But Commissioner, I would say, I would never be unhappy with additional state funding. We begged for it for a decade. But I'm a little concerned that it's going to be so much state funding, new state funding, that it's going to be overwhelming. And we'll go, oh, this, this won't be hard to do. I think it's probably going to be some more state funding. And, and the board will have to prioritize how do we get these things done, and hope that you're able to continue to fund how you've been.
Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, John. I was just going to say, Mr. Weaver, it's never too early to advocate. Yeah, there's a lot that's required of us. So the, the state funding will, will be already earmarked to all of this. And that, it'll be incredibly important that we continue to look at the plan that the, the county has, has set up for Carroll County Public Schools and, and, and that funding. It's going to be critical for us to be able to sustain the, the programs and the things we want to be able to do. So.
I think, you know, the, what's in this report is going to have to be part of our quarterly meetings.
Yes.
And make sure everybody is aware ahead of time to start, as they look at a budget. And I, John, I hate to say, you know, Ted always says you can't build a budget on hope. So, boy, he's entrenched that into us big time over the last seven years. But, you know, we need to see the facts and numbers as we build for future years. So, thank you.
And I think we'll have this on joint agendas. I do publicly, let me also let you know and express my gratitude that Roberta Wyndham, the county administrator, has agreed to join one of our committees here under governance and accountability. And so as we have meetings going forward, Roberta will be part of that. And, and that'll be, I think, a good thing to keep everyone in the loop. Under the policy area of high quality and diverse teachers and leaders, this has to do, the theory behind the commission report and the law with this has to do with elevating the teacher profession by improving rigor and teacher preparation and teacher qualifications, by raising teacher compensation, and by focusing on, on professional standards, professional development of, of the teaching profession. This, this shows up in areas like salary, where there are certain mandates in terms of salary increases for national board certification and other roles under, under what will become a required career ladder, which will in part have to be arrived at through collective bargaining. Also, by fiscal year '27, which means on July 1st, 2026, having a minimum teacher salary in Maryland of $60,000. And then various, various salary increases attached to a yet, yet to be created career ladder. Also, part of this theory of elevating the profession is to improve professionalism and professional responsibilities. And one of the ways in which this law does that, or attempts to do that, is to cap the amount of time that teachers are teaching. So for most teachers, that would be 60% of their time in front of kids delivering instruction, so that the rest of the time can be spent on other professional activities such as mentoring younger teachers, conducting professional development, et cetera, et cetera. And so as we talk about questions or areas of concern, funding is a huge question, an area of concern here. We need, we need time to do an analysis. But how many teachers does it take to add in order to create a structure where teachers are teaching 60% of their day? And how do we afford those teachers? And are they available? Is there a pipeline across this state, which is already an import state, to, to produce those, those teachers? There's some other things. Part of this deals with low-performing schools and how that has to be defined. Probably save that conversation more for another night in the interest of time. But there's a whole lot on each of these slides. There's a whole lot here in this policy area. Third policy area is college and career. Questions?
Just wait a minute, one more.
No, I just wanted to make a comment on that last item, on the last bullet there. Because again, I can see colleges and universities really hopefully doing their part to really make the teaching profession attractive. I mean, and if we get to the point where we have salaries at a certain level, and we have these career ladders built into the profession, maybe we can attract more, more young folks to become interested in the teaching profession. So I just wanted to comment that I think those last two bullets are certainly very important.
Thank you.
Not that the others aren't, but those just really struck out, stuck out to me.
I think they're going to have to do their part, right? Because this is going to dramatically increase the, the number of teachers required in order to meet these, these percentages of time, you know, that they're actually teaching in front of kids during the workday. So, and this is going to require more teachers and that much more funds. I mean, the, the dollars and cents behind this is going to be very significant.
Yes, the demand will certainly be there, that's for sure.
The demand is going to be there. And I'm skeptical that the funds will be sufficient. Is that a reasonable way to put it?
The hiring market. I mean, again, you're.
Right. And is it, is it feasible?
You're already seeing places that can't get people to work. I mean, they're giving bonuses right and left. They're paying them up, you know, 20 some dollars an hour, which is so much more than what minimum wage is just to try to get people to work. So, I mean, it's, who knows what's going to happen there on that part.
John, can I ask one question? Where it says it raises the standards for licensing new teachers to levels comparable to the standards in the top performing nations. Are they not already there?
Certainly, certainly the Kerwin Commission as a whole didn't believe so. And off the top of my head, Board Member Sevigny, I can give you one example easily. They believe that there would need, or there will now need to be a transition in teacher preparation so that as part of preparation, there's a year-long practicum required before somebody could be a teacher. So it's about preparation, licensure, salaries then commensurate with other professions that are, that are, you know, deemed to be in high-quality valuable professions. They looked at other countries. There was so much discussion during the Kerwin Commission of that. They did look at other states, Massachusetts in particular, where, where they've tried to accomplish something like this. To, to, I think, all of your points, many of us were at a meeting last week where Dr. Kerwin himself was, was a speaker. And someone sort of did ask him the question about supply and how do we get there? And he said there might be some, some rough years, but he, he believed if, you know, there are examples, he believed that if, if, if we as a state stick with it, we will, we will emerge in a better place on the other side. Would you say that adequately summarizes what he said? Dr. Lockard? Yes. So we'll, we'll see. Okay. The next policy area deals with college and career pathways, which includes career and technical education. And, and I'm doing a disservice to this area because it's very important and there is a lot involved. But I'm going to summarize it by saying the law would continue a place where we've, a road we've already started down by requiring that a large percentage of all of our students meet college and career-ready standards by 10th grade, so that they then individually as students can be moved into a particular college or career pathway. And those pathways broadly are defined in the law. And these are sort of my terms under categories of advanced academics, dual enrollment programs, such as with Carroll Community College. And our, in our case, hopefully resulting in an associate's degree by the time the student would graduate from CCPS, or career and technical pathways leading to a licensed credential in that trade or that profession. trade or that profession. So our programs at the Career and Tech Center, for instance. There's also still a focus on what we keep calling TSI or Transitional Supplemental Instruction, which began under the Blueprint phase-in a few years ago. That deals with tutoring and intervention strategies for early learners who are identified as struggling. That continues permanently or continues at least under the law until those goals are met. There's also, and this also will deal with accountability, but there's also gonna be the establishment of a state career and technical education committee, which actually falls under the Governor's Workforce Investment Board that will have both some oversight of this thing and some say in making recommendations on skilled areas or how well a local school system is doing implementing that aspect of their comprehensive implementation plan. And I don't even know how to do justice to summarizing what, you know, what would be the things we're thinking about here or concerns at this stage. Once clarity comes, that will help in every one of these areas, but I'll try to summarize it like this. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work. That's a lot of change to a school system. That's a lot of effort. That's a lot of professional development. That's a major undertaking and quite frankly, and I know some people feel differently and that's fine, but we're not staffed the same way other school systems are to take on this kind of sweeping change in terms of our academic programs. When you compare the number of folks who work in this building here compared to the number of people who work in this building and other Maryland school systems, we're not staffed at the same level. That's a tremendous amount of workload on a school system and the people who, you know, who have to complete this work in a school system. That too will be an interesting undertaking. Pause for questions there. All right. And then I think Mr. Shockney is chairing the More Resources to Ensure All Students Are Successful policy area. And again, these are taken directly from the law and originally the Commission Report. And I'll summarize this by saying, this is where the education funding formula changes. This is where the state per pupil amount changes and weighted amounts for certain categories of students, specifically free and reduced price meal students, special education students and English language learner students. There's also a tremendous focus in this part of the law, this policy area, on a concentration of poverty funding program and on community schools, the establishment of community schools inclusive of all of those wraparound services. And again, not doing justice to Mr. Shockney's policy area, but I would say a major concern at this point beyond just lack of clarity is if you look at the, if you look at the standards for concentration of poverty, it doesn't seem likely that in my career Carroll County Public Schools is going to meet that standard and therefore have any access to that funding. Likewise, the same with the funding level or the threshold levels for community schools. It starts at 80% of free and reduced price meals and declines by 5%, eventually down to 55. At least for right now, it would not appear that we would qualify, so there would be no funding specifically for us under concentration poverty or the community schools grants. But I wonder if we won't be held in terms of approval of our comprehensive plan to the same standard of accomplishing many of those services and requirements regardless of the fact that we might not qualify for funding. And then finally, there's sort of an overarching policy area called Governance and Accountability. Mr. Weaver, this is what Roberta has agreed to serve on our local committee here. And, you know, in broad strokes again, a new state body has been established called the AIB or the Accountability and Implementation Board. They are independent of all other structures. They don't, they're not part of the State Board of Ed or the Maryland State Department of Education. They sit outside and they have ultimate oversight of this blueprint law as it moves forward. Also mentioned the Career and Technology Board that will now exist as well that's sort of attached to this. On a practical level of monitoring our progress, the State Department of Ed will form something called expert review teams, and they will send those expert review teams into local school systems, into specific schools. The way the law reads, that's based on, or that's prioritized based on low performing schools, yet to be defined, I believe, but expert review teams would come in and review how well a school within a school system's doing in terms of implementation and then make recommendations for improvement. And all of that adds up to, those last two bullets there, by law, beginning in FY '23 or the next fiscal year, the AIB would withhold 25% for every Board of Ed of all new state aid. So 25% of an increase in your state aid from the prior year would automatically be withheld until it's been determined that the school system is successfully implementing its comprehensive blueprint plan, which is aligned with the state comprehensive blueprint plan. The end. Except to say, so here's our thoughts, obviously up to you. And looking ahead at the next couple of months, we thought for this update, it might be nice in December to talk about a blueprint implementation timeline so to take those last five slides and say, okay, in practical matters, here's some things under these policy areas that have to happen on certain dates, particularly in this first year to give you some, a little cleaner understanding of what these things might mean in action. And then in January, when the superintendent's bringing his recommended budget as well, to have hopefully at least some preliminary numbers out of the state as to what funding is coming to us in state aid under the blueprint. But if these aren't acceptable to you, obviously we'll adjust and change these reports to whatever you'd like to see in that moment.
Thank you, John. Wow, that's all I can say. It's over the top and money and where to find employees and we're all gonna be in the same boat all over the state. It's a lot of moving parts. Dr. Dorsey.
You're right, and I was just wondering, you may have said this, Mr. O'Neill, but I didn't get it if you did. These five work teams, have we already established how many members are going to be a part of each of these work teams?
Yes. And that's not, so there's not a set number. We didn't say you must have five per team. We let them, we let each team leader sort of try to figure out initially, who are the right persons for me to have on my team based on their, you know, their job or their background or their expertise. There's not a set number, it's just whatever number makes sense and is comfortable for working, we can, we have that roster, we can bring that back too next month.
No, I just wondered what the makeup of the teams was going to be.
Yeah. We also were clear that that can change over time. As you begin your work, if you say, hey, we need Dr. Dorsey on this team, then get Dr. Dorsey on that team as soon as possible, so there'd be some fluidity to it as well.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. At this time, Dr. Locker, a pillar three update.
Okay, thank you, Board members. November's the designated month for an update on the Strategic Plan Pillar Three. So Mr. Diaz and his team have prepared a detailed report updating activities towards the objectives and discussing strategies toward meeting the revisions that were made to the plan this past summer, and Mr. Diaz is joining us now.
Yes, good evening, Board members, Dr. Locker, Commissioner Weaver. It's my pleasure to give you a brief summary and then answer any questions. And I also want to take an opportunity to introduce one of my colleagues here as we go through. I think first and foremost, it's already been mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are holding a recruiting event on November 17th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Winters Mill High School inside the Media Center. It's an opportunity for interested members of the public. There is an RSVP link, we sent that out on the school system website, thank you, to the Communications Office for that support and on social media for individuals to RSVP to talk about substitute positions, other positions within the school system, teaching positions, and we're very excited about having those visitors join us. As you noticed, the report has an emphasis on teaching and teachers, the supply of teachers, how many teachers we hired and so on, but I think it's very important to start off by reiterating the fact that we are the largest employer and we hire all types of employees. Our wonderful employees have been working very hard, so from, again, our substitutes to our custodians that help keep our buildings clean, building services, our teachers, of course, Administrator Central Office is very important, so it's a very broad perspective, even though the Pillar Three update focuses primarily on teachers, which is our largest group. I think some brief highlights, some things have already been mentioned, of course, but recruiting and hiring, right, our very best teachers is a very challenging task in the state of Maryland. As you may have noticed, we hired 199 teachers, and the reporting period for this particular part of Pillar Three is from October 1 of 2020 to September 30 of 2021. That aligns with the state report dates, so that's, the data fall into those particular dates. There's a section there as well on teacher gender, race, ethnicity data. Proud to share that we hired 20 minority teachers in the reporting period, which represents 10% of the total number hired. As we've discussed in the past, as a matter of serving the needs of our students, but also following Code of Maryland regulations, we are always aiming to hire individuals who are certificated, have done well in the interview and are a great match for the school system, but that our teaching staff, our staff in general, match our student body makeup in terms of race, ethnicity, gender, all of the different categories. In terms of teacher recruiting, the pandemic, of course, caused a great deal of shifting and frankly, a complete pause in some cases in the traditional method of recruiting teachers, which has a great deal to do with being able to go out to universities, to career fairs and so on. Part of our planning for this year is to re-engage in that process, ideally face-to-face. Of course, many of the universities and institutions of higher education are still working through how they're going to do those types of recruiting events, but that face-to-face connection is very important as we meet candidates. And again, many of you know this, but I think the general public would also be interested in knowing in that we are able to send recruiters to those events and they go through an interview process that includes perhaps interviewing at that site, but then also interviewing in partnership with our colleagues here in the Curriculum Office, who then also, it's a slightly different interview focusing on the content and the teaching of that content, and then of course interviewing with our school-based administrators and other leaders at the individual site as they make a final hiring decision, recommendation, excuse me, and then our team in the Department of Human Resources does the final steps and makes the formal offer. I think what's important as well to point out is that Maryland does not produce enough teachers, right? I think the term was already used, we are an import state, and the data in the report show that basically, when you combine all of the graduates in public and private institutions of higher education in the state of Maryland, they do not produce enough teachers for all of the slots available across the 24 public school systems. Well, if you consider that Prince George's County, for example, and Montgomery County, all by themselves, they could hire every single Maryland graduate and there'd be 22 school systems that have to go outside of the state. In some critical shortage areas, that's even more of a challenge when some of our universities do not have programs in certain subject areas, so we have to often go out of state or reach out to individuals that have been trained in Pennsylvania, Illinois, other states like that that have programs. Part of our recruiting strategies, there's a latter part here, I mentioned some already, including the recruiting event, I can't stress that enough, so anyone interested, please join us next week. Of course, our website is always available, we're always recruiting, in essence, we never stop because we're always trying to fill all of our positions. But a strategy that many school systems use, that we've been using here as well, is the idea of growing our own teachers. So I have a wonderful opportunity, now unfortunately, the two teachers I'm going to introduce to you had to leave, so they were here a little bit earlier, but we have a program here in Carroll County Public Schools, which is part of the Teacher Academy of Maryland. But I do have Mr. Bill Eccle here, it's a wonderful supervisor of career and technology education. And the two teachers who were here, Mr. James Golden, teacher at Northwest Middle School, and Ms. Emily Huckheiser from Westminster High School, I think you met her the other day, Ms. Savigny. The reason I want to highlight this program is that this is a program part of career and technology education that encourages students who have an interest in becoming teachers to go through a series of courses. And I think a little-known fact, but something I definitely want to shine a very bright light on, is that those students that complete that program and then go off to get their teacher certification, when they come back, they're essentially, if they interview well, but many of them do, they're selected and hired as teachers and then are here. So it's an idea of growing our own, encouraging our students to consider education, broadly speaking, not just teaching, but teaching is very important, but broadly speaking, careers within the public school system. So, Mr. Eccle, if you wanted to share any information about the program or if you had any questions about the program, we're happy to answer questions about the TAM program as it's known or anything in the Pillar Three report.
I just had one question about the TAM program. Again, it's great when we can grow our own because again, they're sort of already invested in the system. I'm just wondering, while they're away in college, do we touch base with them at all before the end of their four or five-year program?
You know, I'm gonna defer, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Is something you could add?
So I think that there is some rough touching base because the students will report back to their teachers their successes that they're having, but we have no actual practice or procedure to do that. So that's something that actually we've been looking at, is how do we have a, like, alumni group from the TAM program that we can touch back out to, you know, over time to encourage them to come back to us rather than going somewhere else.
Right, and rather than waiting until the end of their four-year period, you know...
When everybody else is calling them.
Yeah, just occasionally check in, you know, still hope you're interested in teaching, how's it going or whatever, so might be something to consider.
Absolutely.
But it's a wonderful program. I know I've enjoyed, you know, just interacting with the students the times I've had those opportunities. Ms. Savigny.
Mr. Diaz, I did have a couple of quick questions on the, some of the information in the report.
Sure.
You know, the fact that we hired 199 teachers this year, but on page five, it said that we added 1,533 new applicants to the candidate pool, so that's a big number.
It is.
So are we, so the 199 were obviously our top choices, but that's a, that's a pretty big pool. Are most of those folks qualified?
Well, so, so that's your, it's a good question. When we look and we analyze that number, so that 1,533, or even if we take a look at an even larger number, with the applicant pool of about 3,600 applications, a good number of them, number one, are applying for positions that are not critical shortage areas. So the identified critical shortage areas mainly, you know, secondary science, mathematics, special education and several others. The state has also identified teachers who are male and teachers who come from a minority group as a critical shortage area as well, but focusing in here, so a good number of them, when we look through, perhaps have degrees but not in teaching or are applying to a lot of different school systems and they're there. So that number looks large. One point I have that I didn't mention verbally, but it is in the report, in order to hire, let's just call it 200 teachers, and in order to be able to provide our school-based administrators some choice, we need about 800, so if we're gonna send four people to a school to interview three or four people, that number grows very quickly in terms of highly qualified, I mean, highly qualified but also highly recommended candidates. So while the numbers do look large, 1,500, or we need those numbers, actually, we'd like to be a little bit bigger as well, particularly in the critical shortage areas.
Okay, okay. But the 77% hit rate that we have with our offers, like, the fact that we're getting 77% of our first-choice candidates, that's still a very good statistic for us.
Yes, I agree. And keep in mind, in this particular reporting period, these are also individuals who essentially sought us out. I mean, we were recruit, but because of the pandemic, we were not able to go to different job fairs and so on. So when, once they go through the process and they've done well and we make an offer, you can see the percentage is high. We always want to be higher, but it's high in terms of accepting our employment offer.
Okay. And the time series numbers in the back, I think this is, this is telling a promising story, right? I mean, we hired, we were able to hire 10% minority candidates and that is actually having an impact on the numbers.
That's correct, yes.
That we're reporting, and so we did tick up from 5% to 6% this year.
Yes, yeah, you're referring to the tables in the back. And of course, our goal, and I place that there as a point of comparison, our student body is about, you know, just shy of 19%, but you're right, each year if we're hiring a greater percentage of staff who fall into that category, that number is increasing.
Well, Mr. Diaz, I don't know how in the world...
they expect us to hire all these teachers. And the thing that really sticks out to me is in Maryland, reported a 41% decline in teacher preparation programs. And it's like, what are we gonna do coming down the road with this blueprint? And it's very scary. You know, it's going to be a problem.
Yes, I, and I'm glad you picked up on that. Yes, the supply of teachers, as I mentioned, Maryland is an import state. The individuals who are selecting teaching as a profession at the university level has been decreasing. And so opportunities such as this evening and any other opportunities that we have from a Department of Human Resources and also our colleagues in the school system in conversations with institutions of higher education to make sure that A, they're aware and they're, because they have a lot of work to do as well when it comes to the blueprint. So we'll be partnering with them as well.
Dr. Lockard?
I apologize, I had to run to the restroom real quick, but, and I might have missed this. But, you know, I know we have some articulation meeting opportunities coming up with McDaniel and Carroll Community College. And you and I have spoken a little bit about this. We're also very interested in exploring our existing partnerships to see how we can improve teacher pipeline, homegrown opportunities. You talked about the TAM program, I know. But really making to look advancements there. And, you know, I think there are some silver linings as our, you know, our students are coming through our system and then seeing opportunity in local college and then opportunity for employment locally. That, I think that has some potential. And so I'd like to begin to explore that further. I know we've got some great partnerships there, but really looking at how we can improve, you know, the recruitment, diversity efforts, retention as well ultimately.
Yeah, certainly. No, I wholeheartedly agree that the team is committed to that. And again, getting back to, that's where I started with the idea of being able to reach out in person or even if it's virtual with those connections. And thank you, Dr. Dorsey, for that suggestion. Particularly for all students, but as well as we take a look at recruiting at historically black colleges and universities, universities with large Hispanic or Latinx students to engage in conversation about the opportunities that we have here in Carroll County Public Schools.
All right, any other comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I don't think we have anybody else for public comment. They're all in bed. And now we're going to move on to action items. May have a motion for the approval of transfer of school bus contracts.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, board members. This is a routine transfer of a bus contract from one contractor to another, and it's outlined in Agenda Item 8A.
Comments? Mr. Pommarino passed away, and it'll be handed over to his son, so. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It all passes unanimously. It's like, now I need a motion for the approval of award of bids. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Sevigney. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, there's two items on the award of bids. First is the replacement of the greenhouse at South Carroll High School, which supports instructional programs there, and we're happy to be able to do that. And that project is being covered by the local Infrastructure Renewal CIP account. And then the second item on custodial supplies is the purchasing list for supplies as needed for the next 12 months.
I'm very happy to see the replacement of the greenhouse because since I've been on the board, that has been something that we've needed to get done, and that will make South Carroll very happy. Any other comments? Ms. Sevigney?
Dr. Lockard, I just had a quick question. So you said that this was covered by the local CIP. Was this something, I don't recall seeing this in the CIP request. Had we planned for these dollars?
So for small items like this, they're not necessarily in the CIP as a whole. You have a project account in your local CIP that quite frankly, you funded by a transfer of fund balance a couple of years ago called Local Infrastructure Renewal, I think. And what we do is we try to look at that amount of money and see where it sits. Eventually, we'll come back with another transfer request. The schools make their requests each year to Mr. Prokop and his team, and we go out and try to say, okay, with what we have, what's, how do we prioritize what we want to do and move forward what we can? But you wouldn't see, Ray calls these something like tweeners. Something that doesn't require, go through the state approval process. Those things aren't necessarily in your plan. We could put them on the construction report if you want to monitor them that way. But we go to the, we go to the locally-funded infrastructure renewal account for the funding source for items like this.
Okay, and there would be no state participation for anything like this? Or, okay.
That's right, there's no aging school. Yeah, this is all local funding.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the school calendar for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Sevigney. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, this item is coming back. A proposed calendar was brought to the board for consideration at the September 8 meeting. The board had asked that the proposed calendar be published for community feedback, which we've received and reviewed, and returned to this meeting. I did want to make one clarification. I know I wanted to just clarify. We did have some conversation last time around the January 2 date. And the reason that January 2 is included as a day where schools and offices are closed, it's a Monday, is because contractually, the AFSMI unit has that as a holiday, and that's actually statewide. So most governments would be also closed on that day. So contractually, and those are the folks that open and run our buildings for us. So when New Year's falls on a weekend, that is typically, well, it is contractually what we have to honor. And so that's why that's included there. I just wanted to clarify that. So this evening, this calendar is returning. You've seen the feedback for any additional consideration and adoption.
Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, I'm thinking of the feedback that we've received concerning the calendar, especially the Jewish holidays. It seems like we've heard a number of requests that we honor the Jewish holidays. So do you have the latest feedback that we had received, Dr. Lockard, as far as those numbers? I think Mrs. Gaddis had shared.
I sent it to you electronically maybe, maybe two days ago.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I mean, and we added on to those as well. Again, I'm concerned with not honoring those Jewish holidays. Again, I think that we need to, we need to honor those. We need to show respect for our entire community. And again, we know it's not the majority community. But again, you know, we certainly need to show respect to those students and staff members who will need those days as they celebrate their holy days and their holidays. So I think we need to be respectful of that. And I'm just sorry that those aren't included in the calendar.
Ms. Pataglia?
Well, I understand that, you know, we have received a lot of, you know, feedback regarding it. You know, unfortunately, by law, schools cannot close for religious purposes. We follow what KOMAR states we have to do. And that way, we do not single out anyone. We do not discriminate against anyone. You know, population-wise, there is 1.8% of the US population celebrates the Jewish holidays. But 5.8% of the Buddhists celebrate Buddhist holidays. And we don't even give them any acknowledgement. So I mean, unfortunately, I mean, like I've said, you know, several times, there's thousands and thousands of religions in this world. We cannot by law, single out one religious holiday. You know, I am completely, you know, I get it. It's their religious holiday. We don't close for Ash Wednesday. We don't close for Halloween. And for some, that is, that is a holiday for them. So I mean, we just follow KOMAR, and that is it. I mean, I'm sorry, you know, like we've done before, no tests, no field trips. We need to make sure that is done. But we cannot by law discriminate against all other religions and just give one religion a priority over all others. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Savanchi?
Well, a general piece of feedback that I've heard from many students is that especially after we get back into school after an exceptionally long summer break, having consecutive weeks just of school time has become sort of burdensome on the students. And I know that that was sort of a factor that we've considered in the past for shortening the amount of days off that we have. But I have heard from many students, especially this year, that that has not been completely beneficial to them instructional, instructional time-wise either, because it has placed a lot of stress and just sort of put them in there rather than slowly easing them back into the school environment.
All right, Dr. Dorsey?
I just wanted to make one final point, and that's that we certainly don't pick and choose what parts of KOMAR we want to follow. So again, you know, we're saying, okay, we don't want to follow when regulations are passed through the State Department that we're being asked to follow. And now here we are where we could show the community that, you know, we do have some sensitivity to diversity, and we certainly don't want those students and staff members to feel excluded. And I know at times they must if they have to use their personal time to celebrate their holidays. So I'm not going to belabor the point, but I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the school calendar for 2022, 2023 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And it passes 4 to 1. And she is abstaining. Okay? Thank you very much. Dr. Lockard, let's see, here we go. I need an approval, motion to approval of the High School Program of Studies for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by, by Ms. Pataglia.
Okay, Ms. McCoslin is making her way to the podium. The Proposed High School Program of Studies 2022, 2023 was presented to the Curriculum Instruction Committee back in September. I believe it was forwarded to all board members previously and is now being presented for approval. Ms. McCoslin, anything to add there?
Ms. Sevigney?
Ms. McCoslin, thank you. I know that we did discuss this somewhat at the CNI committee or inaugural meeting back in September, I believe it was. And I did have a couple of questions there that I just want to make sure folks understand now. In the, under the Courses to be Discontinued, we had said that, so we're not actually reducing the courses, that there were pieces that were added last year to cover these things that are coming out now.
Are you talking specifically about agri-science?
Yes.
Yeah, so agri-science, we had a locally-developed program of study for wildlife management, and that's what these courses were. Since we've transitioned to the National Case Curriculum for Wildlife Management Completor, so we're going to be following those four courses for that Completor program.
Okay. And similarly, for the Project Lead the Way, we've added those at the individual high school levels, right?
Yeah, so Project Lead the Way was specific to the Career and Tech Center just because of the high cost for not only professional learning, but also there is a fee that you have to pay at each location that you have that program. So since we had more students requesting that particular pathway, and we could support that at all the comprehensive high schools, we decided to discontinue the Project Lead the Way Computer Science and go with the state-approved program of study for computer science at all the comprehensive high schools that was cost-effective.
And then, Ms. Herbert, I wanted to say, like, so I know that we had talked about health being changed to a one, a full credit?
So Health Next Year will still remain at two-half credit courses. But for the 23, 24 school year, it will be offered as a full credit. We do have a plan that we will offer Health 2 as a half-credit until students who, until students can be transitioned through so they can meet their full health credit without repeating health education at one credit twice. If that makes sense.
What repercussions will that be with scheduling? Because I know when I was teaching, you always took that half a credit of health and backed it up with PE. And I know with the four-a-day, changing that to one credit, you are going to kill other classes. So I, I'm very concerned about that, making that a one-credit. That's, you're just killing numbers, killing students not to be able to take other things.
Part of the problem that we're having right now is the 45 days at a half-credit. We really cannot cover the curriculum the way we need to cover the curriculum. Additionally, Health 2 does not cover the standards that need to be covered for a full credit of Health. So that credit, that class is going to have to be completely redone. So the standards, by having it as a full credit, teachers will be able to teach the standards that the state has passed completely and at a deeper level. So if we kept it at two-half credits, Mrs. Herbert, what would happen is they would cover at a very small level the content in Health 1, and then Health 2 would take a deeper dive into the same content that's taught in Health 1.
The other thing I think of, being in that area, you have a ninth-grade girl in that class, and then you have a second semester senior boy. I think the whole activity and conversation would not be appropriate for the ages. That's another thing, and I taught it, and I, you know, and I know it was back in the dark ages. But that's a concern of mine about the age difference in there. I don't like that at all. And, you know, I just don't think it's, I know from teaching that class, it's very sensitive, and there is the age difference and the maturity level. And I, I don't like that. I'll tell you that right up front. It's, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't. I think the ninth graders should stay together with that and their maturity level, and then take the other half-credit because I've been there, I know what goes on, so.
So it sounds like we might need to have some further discussion for the movement to Health being a full credit, but that's not part of this year's
Right.
program of studies changes.
That's correct. But that is, that is a problem. That is a problem. So, you know, I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm also trying to be, I've been there and done that, and there are a lot of sensitive subjects that I don't think a ninth-grade girl's going to want to talk in a class with the senior that needs to graduate and is to put it off to his last, you know, semester. And I'm not being nasty or anything, I'm just being honest in how I know those classes, you know, go. I'm just, I'm very concerned about that and the maturity level. And that, I say no to that altogether, but I'm not on that committee, Ms. Sevigney. So, and I am concerned about that. And also, if you do do that, then we also need to see what you're actually teaching in the second half. But I am very concerned about that.
And that's one of the things that we're looking at in the CNI committee. We're looking specifically at the new standards that were laid out for Health and kind of going through them a little bit more methodically.
And the only reason, you know, I've been there, and it's not appropriate.
Dr. Lockard?
Sure, so not impacted by the approval of this
No, absolutely not.
But a conversation to continue.
For next year. Right, absolutely. Anybody?
The last comment I wanted to make was just about the World Languages, the new course, the Honor Spanish for Native Speakers. That was part of the discussion that we had about the plan for World Languages moving forward, which is really exciting. So I'm looking forward to a time when we can discuss that a little bit more broadly with the full board, so.
Dr. Dorsey has a question.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Dorsey, then Devanji. Go ahead.
Okay, a couple of questions. When you were talking about the World Languages, what school do you think it would be presented in the one that we're referring to now, the one that Mrs. Sevigny just talked about?
The course on page 146, Honor Spanish for Native Speakers. That's currently being piloted at Winters Mill High School.
At Winters Mill? Okay. And then my other question, really concerned, the school counseling. I see under that that we're discontinuing Common Ground on the Hill.
So at one time, we funded a scholarship opportunity for students to do an independent study under school counseling at Common Ground on the Hill. We didn't give that money out. It wasn't as much of a, it didn't go the way we thought it was going to go. We thought we were going to have more kids want to participate.
So you're saying the interest wasn't there?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Reto. Yes, Devanji?
All right, so I have two questions. So for the social studies courses, a lot of them have updated their course descriptions, so why is that specific?
Yeah, so we do have a new supervisor for secondary social studies. Many of the courses such as government, U.S. history, and world history, Maryland State Department of Education frameworks were updated in 2020, so the descriptions reflect those updates. As far as the AP courses, College Board revised and updated courses, and so the descriptions match those updates. And in other courses, we just want to try to be as transparent and as inclusive for students as possible so they really have an understanding of what the course is. We're actually working on that across the board in much of our content. We feel that the course descriptions are just more general, and we really want students to have an understanding of what they're signing up for.
And do we know what sort of courses are offered in the schools under the, I believe, dual enrollment program where the high school teachers themselves are teaching the college-level class?
Mr. King?
Yes, that is a list that we are always working on and developing. The most popular courses have been the English 101, and we try to place them in the schools where there's the most interest. And certainly, Mann Valley's had a very, big, big numbers for the classes. They've been very popular there. Part because of the distance to Carroll Community, and the kids like to stay in their school. I could get you that list of what's being offered, but we're literally in the planning process of that and had a committee meeting about a week ago. So that's an ongoing process.
So have we thought about including that in the program of studies? Because oftentimes, this is the main reference that students use when planning out their high school classes. I know that in ninth grade, I just combed through this entire program of studies and tried to tentatively plan out like what I wanted for like 10th, 11th, 12th grade. And most students don't know about the dual enrollment opportunities until the counselor tells them or another student approaches them with something that they did in the past year.
Yeah, I mean, that, we could, I know there's been conversations about including the concepts of dual enrollment, but the course offerings do change every year.
Okay.
But that's something we can, we can certainly explore. I think it's a good idea. As we, going back to the blueprint presentation, as we try to share more information to increase the pathways, we certainly want to continue to grow the dual enrollment in the school as well as having students that choose to traveling to Carroll Community.
Yeah, I definitely think increasing the amount of information that students receive, like about the dual enrollment pathways at the beginning of high school would be really beneficial.
That's a great idea, Devanji. I totally agree with that, especially with, you know, we did get to address that a little bit at the Westminster College and Career Pathways Night, because I think there, it's not widely known, like that folks just don't know exactly how it works, what the scope is. So I think any additional information that we can kind of get out there to the public or through this, because I think you're right, this is kind of like the manual of what you look through, right, when you're trying to plan things out. So I think that would be helpful, even though it might change from year to year, but we still want to have at least some information and hear about it.
And along those lines, right before COVID, we established the position of dual enrollment liaison, and Mr. Brad Widener has had that role, and he's done an incredible job. But one of the things we've wanted to do is to get him into the schools and events like you just described to really promote the dual enrollment programs. And as we're coming out of COVID and some of the limitations, he's going to be able to do a lot more of that this year and moving forward, which we think will help, you know, spread the word to the rising juniors and seniors of what the, you know, the opportunities are.
Right, because some of the questions we had were, you know, in what instances is it better to go the dual enrollment route versus an AP course, right? Like, so just, you know, depending on what colleges are looking for.
Yeah, and those are the same questions that we as students are asking the counselors and all, too. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Kyler?
Doesn't change the meat of the thing, but the table of contacts, contents, once you get up to, I don't know, 120, 130, it's misnumbered. You just need to check.
Okay, I'll work with Gail on that.
Any other comments? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Personnel Action items.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockhart?
Okay, board members, this is the monthly Personnel Actions detailing hiring, releases, and leaves, et cetera, as outlined in the Agenda Packet 8E.
Comments? Dr., oh, Mr. Kyler?
Yeah, my normal comment on this, and I think it's so great when you look at it, and so many of them are not Step One new employees. They're employees with years of experience. Do you have any feel for the percentage of our, you know, we just talked about HREs, and the percentage of ones that are brand-new versus the ones we get from other jurisdictions with significant experience?
So, well, Mr. Diaz is coming to the podium. I will say to you that Ms. Herbert and I were at the New Teacher Workshop at the beginning of the school year. We addressed new teachers to our system. I think I asked the question, how many of you are new to us but not new to teaching? And we saw a lot of hands go up. Mr. Diaz.
I think that's impressive on how you find them. And like you say, during the last year, maybe how they found us.
Yes. So in the pillar through report, we did include some data when we look at teachers who had prior teaching experience. So 45% of the 199 hired in this reporting period had some previous experience as a teacher.
That's a lot. That's awesome. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockhart?
Hey, board members, the first approval appointments I bring for your consideration, we have a temporary leave at Elmer Wolf Principal. So we're recommending Catherine Fineran, she's the Assistant Principal there, to Acting Principal during this brief leave period. And then to fill the Assistant Principal role, we recommend Kelly May, who's the Reading Specialist at Elmer Wolf, to the Acting Assistant Principal role there. Again, we're just looking at a few weeks here, but officially want to make those recommendations for appointment. And then the last, we are recommending Jen Seashole to Acting Chief Information Officer in Tech Services. I want to personally thank Mr. Brick, who's been also filling in on this role here for the last little bit, for his service in Carroll County Public Schools. Wish him nothing but the best in retirement and a new gig as well on his horizon, but are recommending Jen Seashole. And we are, in the acting role there, we are actively in the process for seeking out and hiring a Chief Information Officer for Tech Services.
All right. Thank you, Greg, for all your years of service. We appreciate it.
Mr. Brick was my senior advisor, so I'm definitely going to miss him.
All right. Okay, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the amended capital improvement plan.
So moved.
By Ms. Sevigny, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockhart?
Hey, board members, I'm happy to bring you some good news. We alluded to this during the construction report. The state has increased their participation on the East Middle Project. So beginning with the August board meeting, and periodically after that, as we've discussed the CIP, we've continued to let you know that staff has been actively working with the state to try to secure additional funding for the East Middle Project. There were two aspects to our belief that additional state funds should be allocated. First, even under the traditional state CIP process, we believe there was an additional $606,000 of eligible funds, more than our proportionate share of funds under the new Built to Learn Act. Second, under the Built to Learn Act, which is different from the traditional state CIP, some design costs are also eligible for state funding. So appreciative of the hard work, tireless efforts of Mr. Procop, Mr. Kane, and at its October meeting, the IAC voted to increase their funding level for the East Middle Project to $27,849,000. This includes the $606,000 referenced at the August meeting and an additional $3,424,000 in eligible design costs under the Built to Learn Act. So we're now going to work with the state to determine the manner and timeline in which we'll receive those funds, but it's very positive news. The adjustment closes the funding gap, which we had talked to you about because of the rising costs of construction, which we would now be asking the county down to only $1.751 million. So I'm so grateful to our team for always pursuing every possible avenue to maximize state participation in our projects, and that's certainly paid off. So this increase in state funding to the CIP must be approved by you as an amendment to the CIP. It'll then go to the commissioners for their budget process and to the state as amended. Did I get all that, Mr. O'Neill?
It's a lot better than 5.2.
All right, Ms. Sevigny, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah, I just did want to say that, so that number was previously 5.2 million, and now it's going down to the 1.75. And we had talked about maybe using some transfers of projects that we might actually be able to.
We can certainly look at that. I think this is a topic that's always on the joint agenda. We could look at that. And I know we're celebrating and kidding around a little bit, but 1.7, when you look at that in terms of debt service, that's less than $200,000 a year. So we went from, whoa, how do we solve this down to something that's, at least in my opinion, very, very manageable under the CIP. And I think there's a chance to celebrate at the joint meeting over this. And God bless Bill Kane, because when he stays after something until he gets it.
Keep working on it. We'll get there.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I wanted to say was, you know, we were, this started out this at a $12 million differential, and
What's the 13?
13.
Thirtened, whittled it down to five, and now it's down to under two. So that is, thank you for some good news.
Yes.
Thank Ray and Bill for that.
Mr. Kyler?
So, and also, we were in a similar situation, Career and Tech, and gained state money. So I've only seen two schools be built, but I just assume they can do that on every school. But no, thank you, guys. That's a good track record.
Any other comments? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the 2021, 2022 SY Before and After Care Lease Agreement at Manchester Elementary.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
Okay, board members, Manchester Elementary had a need to change before and after-day care providers once the school year opened. Mr. Procop was able to work with the principals so the PTA could arrange for a new provider. That provider exists in other schools also, and this is in order to meet the parents' needs there for daycare. So we're bringing the lease to you for official approval. I believe that's ABC. Yeah. Yes, ABC, correct, Ray? Yep.
Comments? Questions? Do you want, Ms. Sevigny?
So, Dr. Lockhart, it's just because there was a change in provider, is that right? Because usually we get that list as a full list from all of the schools.
Correct. So normally, you approve these as a whole in August. You did that this year, and in a couple of cases, you'll be seeing another one of these at your next meeting. In a couple of cases, the original provider wasn't able to continue the lease agreement for operational reasons, staffing, et cetera. And we wanted those schools to be able to pivot right away for their communities, so they were able to work this out with PTA.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need an approval of the International Association of Approved Basketball Officials, number 244, IABO contract.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Sevigny.
Okay, board members, this is the annual contract to provide basketball officials for all JV and varsity home games and scrimmages.
Ms. Sevigny?
Um, Dr. Lockhart, is this similar to other years' costs?
I'll look to Eric. I didn't have last year's behind this, but.
Yes, it's very similar. It's a new group that's formed, and it's a lot of local Carroll County folks, but it's pretty similar, I guess.
Okay, I was just curious, because it said, you know, availability of folks has diminished. So I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Officiating, yes, that's a major problem across the board in all sports, but we feel pretty good about this group and how they'll be able to cover our basketball games this year.
So some of the older officials have retired?
Correct. Yes.
Right. Anyone else want to make a comment? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. King. All right, now I need an approval of the recognition bonus for bus drivers and assistants.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, and good evening, and congratulations.
Sorry, Ms. Diane, she has been waiting there patiently all night. Yes.
Congrats to Diane Grody for making it to this.
Yes.
Our audience is three now.
Yeah.
At your, at your October meeting, Ms. Grody and I presented to you a report on a joint committee and looking at the transportation reimbursement formula. And during that discussion, we had some conversation with you about driver shortages, assistance shortages statewide, and the impact that that's been having on lots of school systems in Maryland and across the country. And we noted that what we would, what we would do is try to, try to go away, reconvene our group, and look at, look at the issue and see if we could come up with anything. We were able to have an involved and spirited meeting this week, and at least we're able to get to this point to bring this recommendation to you. Other counties, as you know, and I, you know, I don't want to cast dispersions on any other counties, because someday that could be us, but other counties have faced some challenges with sort of work stoppages on days or parts of days. We haven't had that in Carroll County, and that's a blessing, and that's a good thing, and we want to do what we can to try to prevent and preserve that. And that's also a testament to our independent bus contractors and their management of their businesses and their employees. And so where we, where we landed in terms of bringing this recommendation to you now is that we could, we could agree mutually to the concept of a recognition bonus for all drivers in the amount of $1,000 and for all bus assistants in the amount of $500 now, to recognize them for their service in the pandemic and to hopefully avert those types of actions and things from occurring here in Carroll. And also, as part of the formula, we also reimburse contractors for their fixed charges. So that's part of this, too. We want to put the $1,000 as a whole in the driver's pocket or the 500 in the assistance pocket, so we would pick up the fixed charges that the contractors bear on top of that. We have a fiscal impact estimate here for you. There are some details to work through, but I wanted to use a safe number that wouldn't be under, you know, what you approve of $425,000 in this fiscal year. There is not identified budget for that, and so that means we'd have to look at year in transfers to cover this if that's possible as we close out fiscal year '22 and head to fiscal year '23. Or you'll have to go to your fund balance through a budget adjustment at the close of the fiscal year to, to close the books with this being, being paid for. And then, you know, this wasn't everything that the contractors would have liked, and so we did agree to continue our discussions with them and look at solutions to the shortage and to pay issues in the longer term as well. So that's sort of the request for this evening, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Sevigny?
I did just want to make a general statement to, you know, so the public is aware. They might have started to see changes recently, right? Like, there's been a lot of consolidation of bus routes because we don't have enough drivers. of bus routes because we don't have enough drivers. I know my son is on one of those combined bus routes now, and Ms. Herbert, your granddaughter is. So I'm not sure how widespread that is. Like, do you know how many bus routes we had to adjust for that?
Sure. And I can tell you my best guess, and Mike Hardisty can correct me. And let me start by saying that's true in almost every county. The last time I tried to touch base with our peers across the state, one of the eastern shore counties was the only county not reporting experiencing that problem. I also think it's worth noting, and this is one of those things where you have to weigh what you want to broadcast. We're struggling. We're struggling on a daily and weekly basis. But in some counties, short of work stoppages, they're having buses not run every day. And that was actually true for years in some places, and that's part of their culture. That's never been part of our culture here in Carroll County. We've gotten our kids to school. But I would say we're covering five routes a day, Mike? Five to 10 a day to piece them together. And so we do that by doubling up runs, taking two buses on two different routes, and having those two or more buses, you know, take a piece of the missing route to make that happen. That's how those challenges are being met, between Mr. Hardisty's folks coordinating with Ms. Grody and her fellow contractors to get those things done every day. And there's inconvenience. There's inconvenience for families. There's inconvenience at the school sometimes in terms of when students get there. But if there's a, you know, a silver lining in this cloud, it's, we're somehow doing better than others and trying to hold that together. This is probably, maybe this helps with the driver shortage in terms of retention. We hope that's the case. Hopefully, this also helps Carroll avoid one of those situations like other counties have experienced in terms of a stoppage.
And I need to, we all need to thank the bus drivers, because they've been working with us. You all have made all different changes in your schedules. You ran buses all summer, and now you're running buses after school, and we definitely need all that tutoring. So we cannot thank you enough. And I understand, Diane and I rode our own school bus together when we were growing up, so we go way back. But we have to thank them, because they have not done a sick out, they have not stayed home, and they have kept the wheels rolling on our bus, on the buses to get our students there. Because without the school buses, school does not open. And, you know, we haven't had to say, okay, parents, you got to get your kids to school. So I thank you. And I do understand about the 6.5 mileage, I do understand that, and the twice-a-year setup fee, and I hope you all can work that out with the salary. Because I know people can go to other counties and get more money, and I also know that you can go jump in a dump truck and not put up with children and tell them to put their mask up for $25 or $30 an hour and drive a dump truck. And I understand that. Or you can come to my farm and drive my horses. But, you know, it's one of those things that we appreciate everything you do. And that $1,000 is well-deserved, because you guys have been through that pandemic, like our maintenance people, everyone. So we can, this is a joint effort on all of our employees. So thank you.
Mrs. Herbert just touched on a point probably worth noting. This is consistent with the bonuses you had awarded through collective bargaining with the other units as well.
Yes, we need to be fair. Anything else?
One thing.
Mr. Kyler.
And one more point. Our staff, you guys have all been meeting. I assume she probably got you at CDL by now, all the time you've been meeting with her. But, and technically, we're doing all this, but they're not our employees. They're contractors and subs, and it's still all meshing together and working. So thank you all.
Correct. Yeah. We would pass the money through the contractors to their employees.
All right, Dr. Lockard.
I just want to offer my thanks as well. Appreciate, John, you and Mike spearheading some work to help collaborate to make this happen. We're so appreciative that our wheels do turn every day, and our students get safely and transported to and from school. So my thanks as well. Thank you.
And I still have my signs up for school bus drivers at the farm there on 482. I mean, we need all kind of people, so please come, sign up. So anything else? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And again, Diane, thank you so much, and for working with us. Appreciate it. All right, now I need a motion for the proposed revision to the Board Policy JPA Substance Abuse Revision to Administrative Regulations for Board Policy JPA Substance Abuse Updates for Permissible Medical Cannabis.
So moved.
And actually, we don't need a motion for this, because we're not...
Oh, that's right. This is subject. Yes. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vigney. I forgot to look at discussion.
So, Mr. Streaker, if you could, just provide a very brief overview as it relates to the COMAR and our policy and what that impact is.
Sure. So the COMAR change with permissible medical cannabis is something that we need to address in our policy, because through the substance abuse regulation, we want to make sure that we outline that we clearly are, you know, we would be in compliance with COMAR. So most of the changes you're seeing in the policy are to update that, the definitions, and talking about who, you know, the authorized administration and how that works. Subsequent to that in the regulation, there's lots of changes that we've made to align, you know, it hasn't been updated since '16, I think was the last update, and laws have changed with overarching. The concept is, we no longer have direct discipline, like for X infraction, it's this is the consequence, it's up to this consequence. So that language is, you'll see throughout. And we also need to make sure that we wouldn't be disciplining students who would be using permissible medical cannabis. But they would also, they don't do it on their own. They do that in the health suite. So it's not like something that, you know, I want to make sure people understand that they're, you know, for students who are using this, it is administered in a similar way that students get other medication in a school.
Ms. Pataglia?
No, I was just going to say, you know, I know medical marijuana has come a long way, especially lately, different ways on how to ingest the medicine as you need it. You know, there's different breakdown components. You know, you have your, the medical marijuana piece, and you have your CBD piece, and there's different levels of the medicine regarding it. And I know that on a state level, there's kind of some push for recreation marijuana to be legalized. And I do want to clarify that that's not part of this. This is specific medical use. So, I mean, we're not saying that the students in the bathroom roll in a joint and smoking it. I mean, he's not doing that, okay? That they're in the bathroom, or, you know, if they have to do it at home, and they require a test for sports, that there's reasoning behind it because it's documented.
I think we've clearly identified that by the definition of permissible medical cannabis.
Right. Ms. Vigney?
And, Mr. Streaker, I just wanted to thank you for going through, because I had noticed that, you know, there was only the one change to the policy, but there seemed to be a lot of changes to the administrative regulations. So thank you for walking through that.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Mr. Streaker.
Sure.
Mrs. Herbert?
Oops.
I have a correction. On the first page, it references COMAR Section 7-446. That's not correct. That's not COMAR. That's the Education Article of the Annotated Code. So that should be modified.
O'Neill, you won...
On the first page.
The policy?
Under overview.
Oh, on the cover letter?
Oh, okay.
Right. Where it references COMAR Section 7-446. Section 7-446 is to the Education Article of the Annotated Code. It's statute. COMAR's regulations, so that's something different. The other references to COMAR 10.62.01.01, that's all right.
Okay. So it's just that, there's no change to the policy and reg, Mr. O'Neill, just the cover letter?
That's correct.
Okay. Because we do reference 1062 or 101 all throughout?
Yeah.
In the policy.
Yeah. 1062 is correct, but all the references to Section 7-446 should be to the Annotated Code, to the Education Article of the Annotated Code. They're statutory provisions rather than regulatory provisions. So it's not COMAR, it's Education Article.
All right. We'll bring that back with the approval for the policy.
It's not a substantive change. It's just...
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
I'll email you and make sure we have it added the right way.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. All right. And now, we will have a discussion on the draft revision to the Board Policy GBI Political Activities of Carroll County Public Schools Employees Political Neutrality. Dr. Lockard?
Hey, board members, at the September 23 work session, we presented the board with the existing policy and regulation, frequently asked questions, as well as draft revisions to the policy and regulations for the board's consideration. So we're bringing these back. We had asked, you take a deeper dive into what was presented. We're bringing that information back. At this point, we'd like to take any additional feedback or recommendations for incorporation into policy, and hopefully return at the December 8 meeting for board adoption.
Ms. Vigney?
Dr. Lockard, I was looking through the materials that were provided to the board, and I know we had a work session and a pretty lengthy discussion of items, but I don't actually see that there were any changes made to what was actually put forth as draft form at the work session. So were any of those discussions taken into account? Were there any revisions?
I think the only, I think the only revision that we had discussed with Mr. Omeley was the idea of having some kind of way to track, some kind of system to track these kinds of issues. But I think Mr. Omeley during the work session had said that he wouldn't recommend that, so I don't think we put that in.
Yeah, I guess I'm still struggling with, I know we were kind of trying to shoehorn this into the previous political activities of Carroll County Public School employees, right? Like, so the previous policy was more around campaigning and election activities, which is very different than adopting a politically neutral stance in the classroom, right? And making sure that curriculum is not biased, that, you know, teachers understand that, you know, political activism isn't supposed to take place in the classroom. It's, they're, in my mind, they're two very different things, and I feel like we're trying to collapse them, and I don't feel like it has enough teeth or understanding what we're trying to really accomplish with the politically neutral stance in the classroom.
And we could certainly separate them. The reason that we had, the reason that we had done it all in one place like this is that what we found over the years, when we, when we have something that's sort of the same or a similar topic, and we discuss it over multiple policies and regulations, a teacher or staff member may think that they have read everything on that, if they read a particular policy and they read about that particular subject in that policy, not realizing that it's also in several others. And so our intent to put it all in one was to make sure that if someone was looking for how we were going to handle political issues, activities in general, that if they hit GBI, the policy and the reg, they would really find everything that they would need in one place. But certainly, that's, you know, the board's discretion, and we can change that if you'd rather have it separated.
I mean, does it make sense? I understand what you're saying, because I've definitely seen that in other policies that we've drafted. We're like, oh, but we have this piece over here and this piece over here, and it gets confusing how they might all work together. So I can see that point, although maybe we want to more specifically make the delineation between those two items in the policy. Just like, what is the intent of one piece of it versus the other, right? So there's the piece of it around elections and campaigning, but then there's also the very different piece of curriculum and political activism in the classroom.
If I may, this doesn't attempt to do anything with curriculum. This is designed to keep an individual employee from deviating from the curriculum and going off and having a captive audience presentation to students with respect to that employee's personal political views, whatever they may be. But this doesn't attempt in any way, shape, or form to do a deep dive into the individual curricular content of any class.
Right. And I agree with that. I mean, I know that we're not...
I couldn't begin to start.
Right. But just, I mean, kind of make the assumption upfront that the curriculum remains unbiased, right?
Well, right. And it is not the role of the individual teacher to deviate from the curriculum.
Right. Right.
And so if the curriculum is to teach about the history of something, it's not the role of the teacher to inject his or her personal biases, political viewpoints into that discussion, but to teach it in a neutral manner within the confines of the curricular guides that have been developed already. And the idea also is to do that in a way to facilitate the individual student expression of ideas, whatever they may be. By being neutral, we promote student discussion. We promote student ability to express their own viewpoints, hopefully with guidance from the teacher, so that it's done in a civil, respectful manner. That's the idea.
Right. And I agree wholeheartedly with that. But I think we had also talked about kind of putting together a definition of, you know, what non-disruptive student behavior is, and examples of things that are not acceptable, right? Like, things like, you know, English teachers taking two whole class periods to talk about how the events of January 6th were worse than the events of 9/11. History teachers taking class periods to talk about mask and, you know, vaccine mandates, and, you know, certain videos and digital resources that were not vetted and were clearly not appropriate. You know, I had used the idea of, you know, the opinion papers of, tell us why Cesar Chavez is a hero, right? Not, do you think he is and why, right? Like, so it's these examples of teachers, like, so the whole intent is, we want to teach our kids how to think, not what to think. And there's a dividing line there, and there are, we've heard lots of examples of the lines being crossed. Now, the vast majority of classrooms don't have any issues, but there are, but the eyes of parents were opened, I think, in a digital environment as to a lot of these infractions that are out there, and it is political activism going on. And, Mr. Omeley, you had talked about, you know, some of our younger teachers, how they're, you know, they're coming in trying to take on the world, and, you know, so...
That's what they were taught to do in college.
Right. Right.
Right. So one of the things we did discuss because of that is the need for inservicing. I don't know that you could have a laundry list of things that you shall not do. You know, the example that you gave of spending a disproportionate amount of time on one current event topic versus other current event topics, writing an assignment in a way that seems to be tilted towards one viewpoint rather than allowing for a more even-handed approach. I mean, that sounds to me like how to teach in a non-biased way without going into the curricular content. I'm operating from the assumption that the content of the curriculum is appropriate. I mean, this is all within curricular guides. And as I said it a little while ago, I couldn't begin to go in and do a deep dive into the curriculum. That would take a tremendous amount of time. This is a start. These are guidances. You know, it's built upon earlier guidance that I drafted 15 years ago on political activities during campaigns, and now we've evolved to this. It's always been the same goal. The goal is for staff to be neutral, to come into the school not advocating to a captive audience of students about their position on this issue or this candidate.
Right.
And we've added considerably... And, and we've added considerably to that. But I think truly, if you're looking at specifics within lesson planning, content of assignments, that's, that, I think, that's, that's going a little bit beyond what we've started. I'm not saying that that's not appropriate, but I don't think that should hold up what we have here.
But I think that's the problem is sometimes it's, it's that personal bias that they have regarding something they implement in, not realizing it potentially, okay? I mean, we had the incident last year with one of the programs. And it depicted and flat-out said that white cops are killing black people. That for a third grader, I'm sorry, that's traumatic as far as I'm concerned for a third grader to even, have to even picture that in her mind. But the worst part was that third grader's father was a cop. So, the problem we have is things are being implemented into the curriculum and things aren't, I don't know if they're not realizing it that it could be offensive. I don't know if they're realizing that, well, if I talk about this in an English class, well, technically, that shouldn't be talked about in an English class. That's probably something that should be talked about in a social studies class. So, I think that's, that's what the problem is and we want to stop. We want to stop that personal beliefs at the door. They stop right outside. You don't bring them in. And you surely don't want to project your personal beliefs onto a student. Now, if it's discussions, I think discussions are fine. What do you think of X, Y, Z? Not, this is what I think of X, Y, Z. What about you? That's the problem we're, we're seeing and we want to stop. It needs to be, these are discussions and that's it.
Right. And, and this is designed as written to be at a higher, broader level rather than specific instructional guidance from class to class to class to class. And, and, and I think that any teacher reading this would have a very clear takeaway that my personal biases do not belong in my classroom when I'm instructing children.
But that's the problem is we have some that are doing whatever they feel and saying whatever they feel and nothing is happening. And something has to be stopped with regarding that. I mean, something has to, enough is enough, no more. Your personal beliefs stay at the door.
I, I think, I think that if, if you pass this policy, then, you know, these expectations will be out there and will be very clear guardrails for teachers. And then, you know, if, if there is a problem out there in a school, it can be reported and we can deal with it based on these, this policy and, and regulation. I think, I think the revisions that have been done make it much more clea-, give, give teachers much more clear guidance on, on how to conduct those discussions in the classroom.
I think the piece that had mentioned regarding training and the need for in-service-
Yes.
So, that we can unpack some of those things a little bit more.
Is that something that goes into the policy or does that go into administrative regs?
Because I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. Like, I'm trying to understand what really needs to be part of the policy-
Right.
So, that we can say when there is an infraction, that the, the teacher is violating the policy, right? Like, so, so that something does happen, right?
Yeah, I think we have everything we need here in these revisions to be able to do that, to be able to take care of problems when they arise. Because I think that the writing here is very clear about what, how we expect teachers to conduct themselves in the classroom. I think that certainly, you know, currently this fall and in the future, a lot of the professional development that Mr. Anderson and his group gives to teachers in, in their Curriculum Day of Professional Development can be, can be focused on this kind of thing, you know, more and more. Because as things happen in the classroom, I think teachers more and more want to talk about this. They want to know how to handle these situations in the classroom. So, I think through having the policy and the regs, using them to deal with problems as they arise and then continuing to train our teachers, I think we'll see good results with that.
Mr. Kyle.
Yeah. And, and I'd like, reading through it, there's places where, where you added within the curriculum, a bunch of places. I, I like that. And, and I, this may be an oversimplification, but that's what I like to do. Both of these things are labeled, the policy, the, the regulations, "Political Activities of Carroll County Public School Employees." You just used the term "personal bias." Why, why can't it be both? Because if, if I'm a teacher, I look at this and say, you know, whatever, I have white privilege. That's not political. So, I didn't violate this. Why, can, can it be someplace either in the title or the opening paragraphs? Can it say "political activities and personal bias"? Can that be added?
Well, certainly, you can always, you know, modify this. It's only here for discussion purposes. What we used was the existing policy. And, and while I don't think that we were trying to shoehorn anything into this, I think rather we were trying to expand it beyond campaign activity.
Yes.
And, you know, and, and everything would have to be within the construct of the curriculum. So, let me give you, for instance, we have had on occasion, not frequent, teachers who have injected religious bias. And, and, and they've been told you can't do that. And in some cases, they've done it more than once. And you tell them a little bit more forcefully the second time around, you can't be doing that. So, that would be an example here. One of many possible examples. I think we could probably go until midnight thinking of all the what-ifs.
And, and I agree with that. I don't think this, making this more detailed. For instance, Ms. Pataglia's video, that's obviously outside the curriculum. That was wrong. They pulled it from someplace. I can't believe our curriculum says white cops shoot black people. But I'm just saying, can we hit everybody's, can we add? Everything I see on the title is political activities. That, that's all I see. In the meat of it, I see other stuff. Can we make the title "personal bias"? That covers religious bias. That covers, you know, again, and don't get more detailed in the meat of it because I think it's covered well.
Well, you know, and, and so, that goes to, I don't know if you've seen the PowerPoint that I've used on this and on the role of the educator as the neutral moderator. It's not just politics. It, it is neutrality. And neutrality, I think, for a very legitimate goal. And that is by holding back on your own personal viewpoints, you allow kids to explore their own personal viewpoints. And you're kind of like the Alex Trebek teacher in the classroom, if you will, moderating those discussions in a way that a, a, a student may explore his or her views, learn from another student's views. Maybe one student convinces another student, hey, you know, I like the way you're thinking about this. I mean, if we can't promote civility and diverse opinions, we're not going to have an educated group of citizens in a few years. And that's the whole idea.
We, we could certainly look at changing the title. Instead of "Political Activities of Carroll County Public Schools Employees", we could say "Political Neutrality of Carroll County Public Schools Employees". That way, it gets to the idea of bias.
And I think everything is just so heightened during COVID. People are either for masks or not for masks, for vaccines, not masks, vaccines. Teachers using YouTube inappropriate videos during COVID for whether you were on the A group or the B group. And I, I just think this has heightened everything. And the state of the country has just gotten so hyped and not user-friendly or kind anymore. And there's so many lines drawn in this, in the sand now that this has really become, you know, a hot topic. So, we, we need to fix this.
Yeah. And I, I think, and maybe that words enough, just to me, when it says "political activities", that's all about an election. That's not about personal bias. That's not about-
Yes, that's what you think.
I agree with that.
But, but you do in the meat of it say, you cannot do it if it's outside the curriculum. And that, that covers a, a lot more than 100 examples. But I just want to hit them in the face.
I, I agree with you. And as far as the content of the curriculum, I, I have to say, that's got to be a much more detailed discussion.
Yes, exactly.
Dr. Dorsey.
Most of what I was thinking has already been said. Again, it's on political neutrality. And I think we are saying exactly what needs to be said here as far as saying, you know, that certainly staff employees remain neutral on political issues. And we've also talked about the curriculum. So, again, as teachers, our job is to teach the curriculum. And as we're, as long as we're teaching the curriculum, and I know there are classes where there get to be political discussions, they have to be had. You know, and again, if we can't have them in a, in a classroom, where can we have them?
Right.
And students do need to hear, you know, both sides. And, you know, they just need to, to develop some critical thinking skills as they're going through the whole process of, of learning about our government and politics and the whole nine yards. And I know even with saying, you know, yes, we have to remain neutral. I know if there are ever any kind of discussions sometimes around, well, even around, I guess, students of, of any age. You know, certainly, we as teachers remain neutral. But sometimes kids will say, well, how do you feel about this? What, what, what are you? And, you know, what do you believe? And again, even when we're put on the spot like that, you know, you still have to say, ah, you know, I really can't share my own personal views. You know, as your teacher, I, I have to remain neutral and, you know. And again, just keep it related to the curriculum. And I think the last time when we were talking about this, we said that certainly the teachers, as they are receiving in-service and development, they're getting the message, you know? We have to teach the curriculum and keep our biases, our opinions out and just stick to the curriculum.
Exactly. And they're coming to us with those concerns. They, you know, I think they want to do the right thing. And I'm hoping that, that this policy and the regs that go with it will give teachers the confidence to be able to do that properly.
Yes, because I wouldn't want anyone to think if we're, if we have to cover government at a certain grade level because we're saying now we want political neutrality, well, you can't really teach government.
Right.
We know there are certain elements that have to be a part of that.
Well, I absolutely agree. I mean, you know, of course, government, you're going to have to have discussions regarding that. But, and, I mean, the whole premise was, your teacher can't say, okay, well, I'm just going to let you know, I'm a Democrat and this is how I feel. Teacher can't do that, you know? They can't put in their own personal bias into it. Teach the curriculum and be as it may. You know, I mean, we, and, and I, and like Marcia said, I mean, regarding COVID, parents saw a lot of things when they were home, you know, when, when we were virtual. They're like, what, what did you, what did I hear? You know, I mean, you, you saw things, you heard things, you read things. And, you know, a lot of it set up some flags, so.
Yeah. And those issues certainly need to be brought to the attention of the teacher, of the administrator. And, you know, we go from there.
Ms. Sevigney.
Yeah. And I agree with all of that. I mean, clearly, you have to talk about political constructs in a government class, right? But it's not that you provide bias in what you think is, what you clearly think is the best way. Like, I, teach history, teach the good, the bad, the ugly. Teach political constructs, like this is what socialism is, this is what democracy is, this is, you know, this is what a republic is, here are the differences, right? Like, you absolutely have to teach all of that. But you teach that information and then the students can have debates on what they think about those things. But there's no, there shouldn't be bias there from the teacher as to what's best, right? Like, and, and you should do this or think this. And so, I, I understand how that wouldn't be in a policy, right? And, and when we start from a place, and I don't think that there is bias in our curriculum today where I think the bias comes in are the lesson plans, right? And assignments and things like that. So, you can't really write that out of a policy. I, I understand that. But, and I agree that it needs to happen as part of the professional development and training. But I, but I think that there should be some examples and things like that. Like, I, I don't want to create a laundry list of examples because you're never going to cover everything and, and it's not necessarily helpful. But when you're talking about PD and training for the, the teachers, there needs to be some examples of, this is some stuff that we've seen in the past and this is clearly not acceptable, right? And, and make sure that all of that is provided as part of PD that, that all of the teachers get, especially the younger ones, right? Who, right, might not be seasoned in how to, in how to handle these issues.
Yes, absolutely. And that goes along with what our principals do during, during professional development time with their teachers. They go through different scenarios with teachers that have happened either in their school or in our county. And they, and they talk through them together so that they can see examples and, and see where things went wrong, where things unraveled and, you know, learn that together as a group in a safe space so that they don't make those mistakes themselves.
Ms. Minstrey.
So, in my personal experience regarding when teachers divert from the curriculum in the classroom, take for example, certain social studies elective classes that we have, like political science. The teachers explicitly tell us that, oh, we're going, we're going to divert away from the actual curriculum here for a bit. But oftentimes, they tell us that it's because the curriculum itself is outdated. And as far as I know, that not many social studies elective courses, their, their curriculum guides or regulations haven't really been changed since 1990s or as the teachers tell us that. So, and I know that when teachers sort of bring in this outside information, they're doing it with the intention of getting students sort of ready for when they get out after high school, when they graduate, when they go out into college or when they go into the career field. And I completely understand that, but I also recognize that the need to like keep away the biases. But do we have any sort of update on the progress of getting all of our curriculum sort of up to date with today's standard?
Yeah. I was, I was going to say, Ms. McKay, but I mean, I've always understood when teachers are writing their lessons plans starting in the summer, I mean, it's pretty up-to-date information. If it's not up-to-date information, they should not be using it.
Right. I'll, I'll let Mr. Anderson answer that.
Yeah.
So, so the answer is yes. That work is always going on. And as you can imagine, the number of courses that we have in our, in our program of studies that you saw this evening, it's enormous. You specifically asked about social studies this evening and the importance of the work that Mr. Melhorn, who is relatively new in that role, is taking on to make sure that all of that is updated, the language in regards to the description, the language in regards to making sure that we're meeting the new standards and how that's being revised. So, that is, that is a lot of work that continuously happens. And there's him, and he has a coordinator to do that as well. What happens is, as, as was mentioned earlier, is that we rely heavily on our teachers, these outstanding and master teachers that you're referencing, to come in and help us do this work. And I'll be quite honest, right now, a lot of that has stalled because our efforts right now, we cannot pull teachers out of buildings to do that. We cannot, you know, and I'm not making excuses, I'm just providing reasons. But yes, that work is always going on. The state, as the state updates their standards, you know, we have to then make sure that we go ahead and make the recommendation or bring it to the Board of saying, here's the new revised curriculum. And I appreciate Mr. Omealy saying that earlier and Ms. Sevigney for you saying it as well. We, we bring all the curriculum to our Board of Education for approval. Nothing gets approved without the stamp of our Board of Education. And I appreciate that comment that it's not biased. And I appreciate that comment that it's not biased. It's very objective, and it really is about the practitioner and what they do with it. But I also understand that there is content that always needs to be updated. And in topics of social studies and those types of things, that's current events, that's happening. I mean, that's changing all the time. Just in the last 10 years, you can think about the content specifically to social studies, has changed so much. So it's a lot of work, it's always happening, it takes a lot of people, our teachers specifically. And right now, we are on a slower roll in making sure we're updating it. AP, as you know, is totally different. We take that curriculum, that's being developed at, by College Board, we, we take it, we present it, we share it. But in order to make sure that it's aligned to the actual test, which is most important, we need to just follow with what they're giving us.
Mr. Kyler?
And, and while, while you're up there, because, okay, let's say a teacher says, I'm going outside the curriculum because it's outdated. Who does he talk to before he does that? Because that, that's some of our problems, and that was the video about white cops shooting people because they thought they were updating our curriculum. Well, they weren't, they were teaching lies.
Yes, sir.
And there's a difference. So who should they clear that with?
First of all, they should run all of their instructional decisions. The instructional leader in the building is the administration, is the principal. Specifically, when you get to more sophisticated content where, if I'm a high school principal, I want to run that through my content supervisor to make sure that it's appropriate. But I will say this about this topic, and I appreciate Ms. McCabe doing this work. You know, this has been around even before the digital age. Teachers would bring in a magazine article that's something that may not have been appropriate, that may have been biased, and they would present it, and it would stir up things. You know what I mean? I can remember as a new teacher that I would have colleagues that would get in hot water for sharing things they shouldn't have shared, you know? So yes, it's more veiled now that it's online, but it's been an issue, it's been a timeless issue of practitioners taking it upon themselves to take resources and putting in front of kids. So it's, it needs to, it needs to always go through, obviously, your building leader, but also our content supervisor to make sure that, yeah, okay, that is, that is relatable, that is, that is something that's appropriate and meaningful to the objectives in the content.
Devanchi?
And I know we don't really want to get into like the specifics of all the different instances that this could apply to, but I just want to reference one specific example as, again, an example. If a teacher has, for example, a pride flag on their desk, an LGBTQ plus pride flag, would that be viewed as them imposing their political beliefs into the classroom? Or would it be them just showing, showing support for the students, LGBTQ plus students and community that is in their classroom? And I think that that's some of the hot water that we're, we're getting into.
So what, what we've said about that is that, you know, teachers are allowed to support the student groups that they have at the school. So, you know, if, if there's a group at the school that supports LGBTQ students, then certainly the teacher could display that flag in the classroom, just as he or she could display any other flag in the classroom that would relate to a student group that is meeting at the school.
Mr. Kyler?
And I think the, the example we had today of, of the student upset, I think something like that on a desk hopefully gives a student of, wow, I can go talk to that teacher and, and I don't feel bad about it. So I think that's a good thing. Now, if they decide to remove our flag, that's a whole other issue. But, but no, I think that kind of stuff's great, and, and it, and it shows diversity and, and it, and it would make me think, yeah, wow, I might go talk to him or her because of that flag. So that's great.
We want to show support for all of our students.
Exactly, exactly.
Anything else?
I guess the, the one last thing that I would say is, I, I still do think that we need some sort of mechanism for, for parents to understand how they, how they make a complaint, how it gets resolved, right? Because I've gotten emails from several students that have said, you know, I don't, I don't know who to talk to, I don't know how to go about this, I feel like, or, or, you know, situations where I've made complaints on multiple occasions and it doesn't stop from particular teachers. So I think those kind of situations, we need to know that it's happening, and there needs to be repercussions when teachers are, and, and I, I believe it's very isolated instance, instances, but it does happen. And we need to make sure that parents know how to make a complaint, how, to, to make sure that, they're, they're not going to have the right to know how it was followed up, but at least the fact that it was addressed.
Yeah. So are you saying you want something more than to say to the parent, you know, we'll contact your child's principal, and let's see if we can get resolved at the, at the school level, what the issue happens to be? I mean, because, you know, as you're talking, you know, about how some parents might be sensing that teachers are, are saying some things that have really upset their kids. Again, we've been hearing all along about kids feeling upset because they've been talked to disrespectfully, and they wonder, well, who do I go to? And so, I mean, you know, it's, it's a whole lot that's out there in the air that certainly needs to be dealt with. But again, in this particular sense, I'm thinking, what more would we want other than to say, to get in touch with your child's administrator's concern?
Mr. Kyler?
And, and the, the experience I've gotten, and again, I, I think, like you said, it's, it's not hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. In elementary school, I said, have you talked to the principal? Yes, I have, three times, and I'm not doing that again because it's a waste. And so what do they do? I just, I, I think, and I don't care if you say email but no reply, there needs to be a way, and, and just, just like the student that was here tonight, there, there just needs to be a way that, that they can log a complaint. And central office may decide it's not valid, and it might not go anyplace. It doesn't mean that, that it's, you know, the teacher's going to get fired tomorrow. I just think there, there needs to be some way that something can be reported and go through the progression. You know, for us, we're told, tell the superintendent. And so we do. And, and we talked about that the other day. I, I, I rarely ask what happened with that because I know it got followed through and whatever happened, happened. But at least I know for somebody, I passed the word. And, and I think that's what people really want, and I understand what you're saying. But, but it's like the group of kids we had the last meeting when you said, talk to your principal, talk to your counselor. Well, I don't want to talk to any of them. Well, somehow we got to make a, a way for people to get the word.
Right, I think that same concept applies to the, the bullying and harassment issues. The same sort of thing needs to happen, right? Like, we need to know about it and understand how prevalent it is and how we fix it, right?
And there are specific forms, bullying forms that are to be completed and processed, so.
And that's the unfortunate part is, you know, I mean, as the situation with Ash, I mean, I'm sure she's gone to administration, she's gone to a trusted person to say, look, this is what's happening to me. But what happens if that person says, okay, I heard you. Two days later, okay, I heard you. Two days later, okay, I heard you. At that point, there is no documentation stating that she's gone to the individual before. So I think that's something that we need to, to make sure we have, is, is there is documentation regarding these things. It's, it's, yes, the bullying form, but the problem is, you know, just with the one bullying form, it's, okay, this happened, okay, thanks, we'll, we'll look over it.
But it's, it's processed, it goes beyond.
It's processed, exactly.
The school level. And again, you know, as students come and share concerns and reports, again, it's all documented by whichever administrator is working on it.
Yep. We do, we do have a, an information section in the handbook informational calendar that talks about, you know, what to do as a parent if you have a concern, and it's a global kind of thing. So it would cover everything from bullying to political neutrality to whatever the issue is in the school. And it kind of goes through, you know, you start with the teacher, then go to the school administrator. After that, you can go to a school level director, and then a chief, and then the superintendent. So there is kind of a, a chain to let parents know who, who the next person would be that you might contact if you, if you are not satisfied with the outcome of a complaint. We could look at what we have there and see if we might add to that and maybe put it out in different ways.
Yeah.
So that people, so that people see it and they're more aware of it.
And I think it's a check and balances too for, for staff, you know, whether it's the teacher, the administrator, you, you know, Dr. Locker, it's a checks and balances. So if you see that someone has, has made a complaint, but the same thing keeps occurring, you guys can say, okay, well, what's been going on? This has been happening four times. Why wasn't anything done? Well, we were working on it, or we tried, or, you know, so that way it, it's known. You know, in the event an appeal happens, you know, things like that nature I think are important. I mean, in, out in, out in businesses, there's a survey, there's a survey number, you can call, you can let, you know, you know how things were. Got to have something like that too. I mean, the public, they trust their kids with the staff and everyone here. They pay, you know, the services. So in a sense, I mean, they need some type of, how's our, how's our teaching going? You know?
Any, anything else? Thank you. Good discussion. All right, there is no community advisory council report tonight, and do we have any unfinished business or new business?
Yes.
Mr. Kyler?
Since, since we didn't have that report, can Ms. Sevigny and Ms. Pataglia tell us how there are no committees going, and how many from the public came, and how was it? Is it wonderful?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was the, the curriculum and instruction committee meeting was very well. We have another one coming up this month, in November, next week actually, I think. I mean, it was, you know, you, we have departments come and they discuss the different pieces of the curriculum, ask a couple of questions. There was two people, I believe, from the public here, but no one had spoke.
Right, at the first meeting, I think there were three people sitting together at the...
Something like that.
Listening in and, and maybe two at the last one.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, it, it means it's, it's really going good. We got a little tidbit on global citizenship, which is kind of like my baby that I've been advocating for, for the, forever now, and that's something we can work on is to fit our community needs, you know, which is important. Again, the discussion pieces, and, and Devanchi, you would, you would love that part. I mean, it's, it's the good pieces of coming together, discussing your differences, discussing, discussing issues that are happening locally, nationally, whatever. But it's just the point of having discussions, learning how to talk, and learning how to say, I hear you, and, okay, thank you, I understand, here's my point of view, without name-calling, bullying, bashing, and this thing of nature. And, you know, I've said before, you know, Anarota County, it was like, it's like an anti-bullying tool as well, and that helps, that, you know, kids stick, end up sticking up for each other in high schools, so that's a good piece to it. So there's, there's lots, lots to it, so we're...
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot to cover, as Mr. Anderson can attest to. I think after only two meetings, I've already got, you know, stacks of, of stuff to go through, the paper inundation, but, but they're really leading to good discussions. So some of the big meaty topics that we've already talked about are, you know, the new health curriculum standards and, you know, where we think they really align. Like, we, we don't have to use all of these standards, right? There are things that we are allowed to look at and say, this is not in alignment with, with our community beliefs, right? And, and, or we don't think that that topic is appropriate for a seventh grade level, right? There, there were some of the standards that we were looking at saying, no, you know, like, that is way too young to be talking about some of those things, right? So I think those are really good discussions, like trying to understand, lay out, these are the standards that, that have been provided. We don't have to adopt all of them. Which ones do we think are in alignment? Which ones do we not think are in alignment with, with our community? And there was also some really interesting things with, you know, the World Languages Pilot that is actually very exciting. Mr. Anderson, I don't know if you're planning to, to kind of bring that update since, since clearly we were very excited about it. You know, like, at what point do those kind of, those topics kind of come to the board so that you hear about them? And, you know, so we did cover a lot of, a lot of miscellaneous topics, and I, I think it's basically, the, the first cycle through, it, it's going to be a lot of things that we're touching on. So I think that we'll bring questions and concerns to this group, right? So it's kind of like a pre-vetting, I guess, you know, before things get here, so we can narrow it down to, okay, here are the couple of things that we want to make sure you guys are all aware of, like with the, the program of studies, right? Before we approve it, okay, here's the, here's the one or two things that, that we were concerned with, and then, you know, bring that to a broader board discussion. So I, I think it's, I think it's been very good.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right. Devanchi, go ahead.
So I actually wanted to talk a bit more about the mental health of our students and our teachers as we were talking about before. I know, Dr. Locker, you mentioned a lot of different strategies that have been put into place. But I feel like we can do a bit more in sort of helping our students and teachers adjust back after the pandemic and the virtual environment, and sort of the hybrid environment that we had. And I just want to relay some feedback I've gotten from students. For example, with the Wednesdays that we had last year, they were a great resource for our students to catch up on the work and for teachers to catch up on grading and just consult with individual students for an hour at times to get, like, get them caught up and clarify some of the material. And I wonder if, of course, not taking out a block of the, an entire week, of an entire weekday, but just using some instructional time in a week. For example, I know we have the half an hour pause in advisory lessons in middle schools and high schools, but also maybe extending a one-hour study hall period during the instructional week for one day to sort of aid in abetting some of the stresses that students and teachers are both feeling right now.
So I appreciate that feedback. You're talking about embedded within like a school's schedule, individually looking at maybe extending, you know, some of the times that are already built in. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's certainly something to consider. I appreciate that idea.
And Dr. Locker, you brought up this evening, and I know we've been getting a lot of emails. Educators have been saying they're overwhelmed, they're overwhelmed. I know principals have contacted us and said they're overwhelmed. I'm so glad you stated tonight about no new initiatives unless it's by the state, and they understand. I know we have overachievers, but it's tough because we are back five days a week and children are not behaving the same as they did two, two years ago, and there's a lot to get caught up. So I know they, they feel pressure, but yes, with the no new initiatives, that, that will help them get through that year, through the year. And let's hope this gets behind us. I do have, and I know, Mr. Anderson, you told, gave me an answer, but we've been getting a lot of emails, and I've had phone calls and all that stuff about Lawn Boy. When will you be announcing the reconsideration committee's answer to that? And because people have been asking me, and I thought you should say, you're, you're in charge of that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the committee had, had been doing their work, they're coming to their final decision. I believe they had, they have a certain number of days they need to go ahead and have the report written by or the finding. I believe that is going to be mailed to the appellant. I believe the final write-up will be done by November 15th, which is next...
Okay.
Is that Monday?
Monday.
Monday, mailed certified to the, to the community member.
Okay.
And the board will be notified at the same time that it's being mailed out.
All right. You know, people have been asking questions, I don't, you know...
Yeah.
I'll remind folks, there's a appeal process to that too. So if the appellant doesn't like the decision of the review committee, it'll go to designee... So if the appellant doesn't like the decision of the review committee, it'll go to a designee, and then ultimately, it could come to the board, so.
And the last thing I want to bring up is Francis Scott Key's field. I've seen many pictures of it underwater this fall, and they have stated that the boosters just can't handle that anymore. I know this is not the time to bring it up, but it's time to look at turf fields, and this is going to be a major undertaking with hundreds of thousands of dollars to get that field fixed anyway. So I would like some information brought to the board about what we're doing with that poor field, and see what we're, you know, we got to look down the road for that. So.
We'll do it.
Yep.
Ms. Herbert, one, one other.
Yes.
Thing. I know that, you know, we didn't have a CAC meeting this past month, so there, there's no report for that. But I know that that group, it does meet regularly.
Yes.
They're, they're looking for meaty topics to help the board with. I think we have so many meaty topics right now. The fact that they're reaching out and asking how they can help, what they can investigate and provide input to the board, I think we should start seriously considering about how we can engage that group.
More.
More. And, so the, the mental health issues, is there a discussion with that amongst the parents? There's individual schools, or even though we haven't seen results from assessments, right, from, from the spring, or the, the ones that have just come out this fall, we know that individual schools have a lot of that data, they're developing their, their sit plans. Is that maybe something that, you know, you can talk about with the CAC group, right, in, in terms of academic achievement, and how, how they can improve it at their particular school, if they can get involved in the, the sit team plans? Or I, I, I'm not necessarily proposing anything very specific, but I, it's a group of people who are willing to help, and, and I think that we have so many meaty topics.
I think mental health would be a really good one for them to look at.
Okay.
So I would like to maybe put it on the agenda for next month, that we actually specifically talk about.
Give them some topics.
Give, give them some topics to help us out with.
Yeah.
Brenda, CAC has a meeting next month, correct?
Yes, it's the December 2nd.
Yeah, so it's December 2nd. So I think it's something we can definitely bring up, the mental health piece, you know, talking about how, how different schools can help in their communities, what's different ways that they could work internally and externally, you know, how different components can help out things, depending upon the age. I think that's something, definitely, they, they could work on. Yeah.
Anything else? All right. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and enjoy your family.
Gabba gabba.
And I will ask for a motion to close this meeting, and we will go back and close. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
Oh, seconded.
Mr. Kyler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you.